Yeah.
Give it one minute, camera's starting. Yeah, you got the right link? From March 11 link? Okay. Okay. Well, we're already in. Did you paste the entire link? We, you can go, you can go to the calendar, go to the calendar page. For March 11 and, you know, near the bottom where it's written, just copy out that whole link, HTTPS, et cetera. Drop that in the browser.
I don't know why, but I got. So I'm back in now, but I had.
Okay, I think he's connecting. Mr. Maltz, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, speak a little bit so we can see whether that problem you had last time is still there.
Uh, no, uh, is everything okay? Can you hear me?
It's in and out again.
I can hear you very well, but you can't hear me.
No, you may have to do that dialing again. Okay, why did you get rolling on that? While we get started with meeting, okay?
Is there, is there a phone number that you have?
Yeah, I think it's down.
On the agenda list somewhere.
I don't have the agenda.
It's on the RoseNet.
Okay, so what I have to do?
Yeah, I thought you could click on, click in here somewhere and get it too.
If I may, it's located by the mute button. There should be an arrow at the top right of the mute. Right. Click on that arrow. You can then click dial in by phone. And when you click on the dial in by phone, it should give you the instructions on how to do that. It'll give you the phone number to call and then the meeting ID that you'll need to dial in.
Okay, unfortunately. It doesn't.
Is that what it says, switch the phone audio?
Yeah, that's what mine shows.
Switch the phone audio. Okay, so now I just dial in any of these numbers.
Yeah. How about Russell? Do we get in yet? This is why I try and say login by 7:15 so we don't have this, right?
I do not have Mr. Stern and the attendees.
Okay, now I got somebody else emailing me here.
Fran, did you, did you see there's a note from Jim Foster? A chat he chatted that he's.
Not clear that I am in the meeting. I don't. I do not have him.
Uh, this is Harold Wolf. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm dialed in. I'm gonna put it on speaker. Okay, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very, here you find.
Hold on, I got one more issue here.
Hopefully it's not with me. Fran, you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
I have Mr. Foster.
Oh, there he is.
I do not have Helen.
Is she in the waiting room?
No.
She's, she's texted me here.
Finally, hello. Hey.
Hi, Russell.
Well, you, if you're interested, I could tell you a little bit what's going on in Chatham zoning board of adjustment, because that's, I visited them very, for a very short visit.
Okay, so I think Helen will be joined shortly. We're gonna get rolling, okay? Okay, so everybody all set? Okay, this meeting, the Borough Madison zoning board of adjustment is now called to order. This is the regular, regular virtual meeting of March 11, 2021. Can I get an announcement notice, please?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. At the reorganization meeting of the board held on January 14, 2021, board by resolution adopted an annual schedule and meetings. On January 15, 2021, a copy of the schedule of meetings was posted at the bulletin board at the main entrance of the Hartley Dodge Memorial was sent to the Madison Eagle and the Jail Record and filed with the Borough Clerk in accordance with the Open Publics Meetings Act. In response to public safety considerations and legal authorization, the Board of Adjustment began conducting its monthly meetings remotely using the Zoom platform and subsequently separate notices, separate notices have been published each month, advertising of this change and indicating that the procedures and requirements for monitoring such meetings and for making public comment along with an explanation of the audio muting function of the electronic communications platform being utilized is provided with detailed information on how do you zoom and participate down on the RoseNet webpage.
Thank you. May I have a real call, please?
Mr. Dianio?
Here.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Here.
Dr. Patel?
Here.
Ms. Salco?
Here.
Mr. Santoro?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Ms. Taratelli?
Here.
Okay, very good. So would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? Fran, you have a flag there. Very good. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic. Good job. Okay, next is minutes for approval. So these are the minutes for the special meeting of Feb. 25. And that looked good to me. So is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so no comments. All right, so then. All in favor of the minutes of Feb. 25 as presented, please say aye.
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 Okay, these minutes are approved. Next are resolutions for memorialization. Case number Z 2022, resolution granting variance application adjacent in Tanner Block 4301 Lot 10 392 Woodland Road. And that one. That one looked okay to me. Does anybody have any changes to Tanner?
Looks fine to me.
Okay, then. All in favor of this, of this resolution that's presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so this resolution is adopted. Next is case number Z 21 001, resolution granting variance application Rebecca Pennington Block 101 Lot 31 23 Shady Lawn Drive. That one looked okay to me.
Yeah.
All good to go? Okay, so all in favor of this resolution as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so this resolution is adopted. Next is case number Z 21 002, resolution granting grants application Gregory Lauren Nero Block 914 Lot 23 63 Hamilton Street. That one looked good to me.
Yeah, it looks fine to me, too.
Okay, so then all in favor of this resolution as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that, this resolution is adopted. Okay, so. Next up is scheduling and procedural matters, so we'll make a few announcements. So at this meeting, we're going to hear KC 2018 Madison Movie Development. We'll spend an hour or so, something like that. With them, then we have NOVAC, which is Z 2023. And then we're gonna do Angelica Properties, Z 2017. And then. The following. Applications are carried to the dates that I'll specify. So case number Z 2006 297 name will be at the special meeting of March 25. KC 2025 Walsh for Laurel Way will be at the regular meeting of 4/8. Haviland, Z 2103, 3 Old Greenhouse Lane will be at the special meeting, part of the special meeting of March 25. Donato, 241 Woodland Road, you're gonna be at, on the March 25 special meeting. Case number Z 21005 Kent 4, that's the special meeting of March 25 as well. Case number Z C 21006 Seeley, 8 Old Greenhouse Lane, that's the regular meeting of April 8. And then Mandela, which is 21007 51 Cantaberry Road, that will be at special meeting of the 25th. And then later on tonight, if we have time, we'll do our annual report. So Gary, was there anything else, anything I missed there?
No, well, the only thing I report scheduling wise is that I did speak earlier today with Steve Azalini, the attorney for the 295 297 Main Street application. He said they're still planning to get revised plans in by Monday. And as you may recall, they were carried to the special on 3 March 25. So the expectation is that they will be prepared to go forward at that meeting. In addition to the, yes, four residential applications that were carried just now. So that'll be on the 325 agenda. Presumably, it'll be on the agenda whether we, presumably we will be able to proceed.
Okay, very good. And then. Helen Carr just joined us. All right, so we're gonna go to old business. So this is case number Z 2018 Madison Movie Development. So we're continuing what we started on the 28th and then on the 25th of February and then the 4th of March. So Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, board professionals, Peter Wolfson, along with my colleague Luke Pontiere of DePitney here on behalf of the applicant. Perfect. Chairman, you'll recall that we ended the very late evening last week with Eric Keller serving as our traffic engineer. He took questions from the board. There was not an opportunity for the public to ask questions. I know that Mr. Maltz is also in attendance. And then further, it was clarified that Mr. Simon would not be attending tonight for his client. And the thought was that we would attempt to get through questioning from the public other than Mr. Simon. Any comments Mr. Maltz cares to make and then close the public except for Mr. Simon. So with that, I would, if that's accurate and acceptable to everybody, I'd ask Eric to come back up and entertain questions.
Yeah, before we do that, I think Helen and James were gonna step down again. That hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, I was gonna comment, Joe, I will step out since I'm recused, since Janet is likely to be talking on behalf of the HPC as per your note.
Well, you're welcome to come back once we're through with.
Yeah, she'll, she'll step in for me.
And you're welcome to watch from the waiting room. You just kept the analyst.
I'm recusing myself, too.
Yeah. So Fran is going to push back in the waiting room, so give him a second.
Hey, one minute.
Okay, so it looks like Helen's out.
Who was gone? Jim's still there.
There we go. Great job. Other, I like it.
I think we lost Mr. Wolfson.
As I say, it looks like Peter may have been demoted as well.
Luke can take over.
Okay.
No, he says he needs to be elevated.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll give him a second.
Got it.
There he is, you're back.
All right.
You didn't miss anything.
And then also, after we get, get through the traffic aspects of it, there were some memos from various commissions that we want to get on the record. So we'll get, we'll get to that next, after that. So. Should we, should we, maybe we should hear from Mr. Maltz at this point, right? Because your plant, your traffic expert went. And, but why don't we give Mr. Maltz an opportunity to comment on what he heard as well as share his own view?
Hey, this is Mr. Wolf. Can everybody hear me okay?
I can hear you.
It's okay, the sound is good.
I think so. Is everybody all right?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead, proceed.
Um, I, you know, I've reviewed Mr. Keller's and also the report that he submitted, the extensive, you know, field work and the parking studies and traffic counts that was submitted to the planning board, which was also back referenced as this application. I'm gonna try and be very brief. Essentially, I'm in general agreement with everything Mr. Keller presented as to his studies, findings and conclusions. Very briefly, you know, the, the current proposal is 24 apartments with 24 garage spaces on 1700 square feet of retail. This is a reduction of the retail from the previous 4,526 square feet. That's a 60% reduction. And the 91 seat theater and whatever it generated is gone. In terms of his trip operation, I agree with the source he used, which is also required by the New Jersey Residential Site Improvement Standards. The 24 apartments only produces 8, 11 and 17 trips in their respective AM, PM and Saturday peak hours. I agree with Mr. Keller's analysis. These numbers are too small to have any notable impact in any location. Similarly, the retail, which is also very small, only produces two 28 and 26 trips. That's total two-way in the weekday AM, PM and Saturday. And about a third of it is not new trips, but people that might be passing by the area already and decide to stop. So once again, we're talking very, very nominal flows. He performed capacity analysis. This was a report that was submitted through the planning board and Lincoln Place and Prospect and Lincoln Place at Green Waverly. And I reviewed his work and the impact of this project that those two intersections is a half a second of additional delay or less. And this is imperceptible to motorists. So I agree with Mr. Keller's findings in that regard. In terms of the parking, they're providing 24 garage spaces. They're gonna be assigned as one space per unit. And the RSIS does allow for alternative parking standards to be accepted by the, to reflect the local conditions. And some of the things that it lists are available mass transit and available off-site parking resources. Well, the Madison train station is directly across the street. And in fact, there are reductions. The New Jersey Transit put out a publication, I cited in my review, that identifies for this proximity, you can reduce the parking demand by about 30%. So 47 spaces comes down to 33. Supplementing the rest, you also have mass transit in terms of buses around the corner along Main Street, which would also affect the parking demand. And finally, in terms of off-site parking resources, Mr. Keller did, the staff did an extensive study, which was summarized in the report that went to the planning board of six municipal lots, and they didn't, didn't even bother to take into account on-street parking. But there was substantial parking available, which would be for visitors and anybody for retail would park in those areas. So I'm comfortable with the analysis that was performed in terms of the parking. He discussed the site distance was, which was right in line with what I presented, so I'm comfortable with that. The, by recommendation to add pedestrian crosswalk signs at the two crosswalks, which are just to the east and west of the site frontage, as well as advanced pedestrian crosswalk sign assemblies. They've agreed to provide that. And finally, the, the, they're providing nine by 18 parking stalls with 24-foot aisles, which conforms to the RSIS. There was some discussion about columns that could protrude on one side, six inches into a parking space. I'm not troubled by that. This is very common in a garage. It certainly reduces it in that area to pull in at eight and a half feet. You can certainly pull a vehicle in, in that area, but what's important is the vehicle pulls forward, the doors that people have to get out of, the passenger, the driver are beyond the, are beyond the columns. So you have the full nine-foot width available. So I'm not troubled by that at all. The only thing that I would note is that there was a request to provide a turning template of a car entering the garage. There was some discussion if they could make the garage door a little bit wider instead of 18, they do 20. Mr. K. Keller can address that. And I think there was a board member, it wasn't something from me, but prior to one of the, it might have been the first hearing, a board member raised a question about access with parking on Lot 1, which is behind, the property behind us. There's nine angle spaces and I think there's six perpendicular spaces. The angle spaces face towards Main Street, and there was some talk about if that area is gonna be cleaned up or whatever. Possibly Mr. Keller could talk about that. I would note, they have an access drive under the building, which goes out to Main Street. That's, excuse me, the lot number. So that would be. Sorry, I just don't have the lot number. Oh. I think it's through Lot 10, the, that, that drive that goes out to Main Street. But the type is essentially being used as a two-way facility. So Mr. Keller can address that as was. I didn't bring it up. I think it was brought up by a board member. So that basically, I'm comfortable with the vast majority of what Mr. Keller has presented, and I have no other comments.
Okay, good. Mr. Wilson, did you, did you have any comment on that? On what Mr. Maltz? You're muted.
He's unmuted. As I reported last week, we continue to be in contact with the neighbors that share the driveway with us, and that process is underway. We have worked on all the issues that we heard in terms of feedback, that being one of it and one of them, and we hope to be able to report back to you on some solutions in advance for our next appearance.
Okay, that's good. So maybe we should see if there's any questions from our experts, either our planner or our engineer, and then we'll see if the board has questions.
No questions, Mr. Chairman, on Mr. Keller's traffic testimony. I do have one clarification or one concern that would really be for Mr. Gertler. And it regards traffic and turning movements. So if you don't mind, I'd like to get this on the record quickly. On your sheet, Jeff, I'm sorry, Mr. Gertler. A 101, where it shows the garage door opening on the cellar floor plan. It shows a projection of the wall. Narrowing down the garage opening. In effect, Jeff, it's, it's where the pedestrian entrance is. And looking at a, an elevation drawing, it appears that that wall does not project in front of the pedestrian opening. In effect, making the, the opening to the building on the, on the facade of the building wider than 18 feet, which would greatly help the turning motions there. I would just like you to take a look at that, if you would please, and see if that is indeed the case, that the opening of the, at the building envelope is actually wider than what's shown.
I, I think on the elevation, you'll see that there are columns, or maybe in plan you'll see it easier. There are columns on either side of the door openings, and they're in a regular rhythm with the building, so they align with everything up and down. And that was one of the triggers for the size of the opening.
That's, that's fine. I'd like to take a look at that offline with, with Mr. Gertler. We can, we can resolve that, but in, in my view, it would greatly aid and improve the turning movements for cars exiting the garage.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Just Stern, did you have any questions?
Sure. Mr. Gertler, I probably know the answer, but it did come up in my report. The farthest parking spaces in the building, really the two spaces adjoining Lincoln Place. Is there any opportunity to widen those by a foot or get a little area to make it easier for those vehicles to back out?
Yeah, it, it would be, if we had more room, I would love to do that, but we are sort of at the property line on the south side, which is Lincoln Place. And if you basically count the nine-foot stalls as you proceed north, it terminates at the opening for the garage doors that we were just speaking about. So that, that is, they're all exactly nine feet. That's along the eastern side of the building.
Right, so it's that, what limits you is the columns, the garage door opening and your pedestrian egress door.
Well, in a way, there, the answer is yes, but it really is really down to two, and that is the nine-foot wide parking stalls and then the 18-foot wide opening that takes us to the back of our property. So we don't, if we reduce one, or if we increase one, we reduce the others.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, so does the board have any questions? On traffic?
No.
For any of the experts? Okay. Very good. So then, Fran, what we're gonna do is go to the public for questions, and the questions are going to be on the testimony from both of the, potentially from both of the traffic experts. And then I want to mention to the public again that this is an opportunity to ask questions of the witness, to get to the facts, bring up things that, you know, maybe haven't been talked about, that sort of thing, but get, get to the facts. And so it's not, it's not an opportunity to talk about whether you like the project or not, that, that'll come later. So are there any hands raised? No?
Hold on. Yes, there are two. Catherine Cacavalli?
I had a, I think you called on me, Kathleen Cacavalli, 82 Central Avenue, Madison?
Yes.
Okay, my, I have one question, and that is, has anybody checked the turning radius for the first parking spot closest to the garage door on the driveway side?
Not specifically. Look at that, but I mean, it may be that, that takes more than one maneuver, but that is, is not an unusual arrangement in a garage. It is a small garage with a limited number of vehicles, so we don't see an issue with that.
And people can back in? There won't be any restriction on backing in?
If somebody chooses to back in, they, they could.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional?
There's two others.
Okay.
Dorothy?
Hello?
Hi, Dorothy O'Brien, 38 Crestwood Drive. Concerning the, the, the first person's question concerning backing into the parking spaces. Will the columns allow for driver doors to open based on the placement of the columns?
Yes, you mean if a car backs in?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the, 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 uh, doors would be behind the column. So if they backed in, they would be able to still open the door.
Okay, and that's for all twenty-four spots?
Um, well, to the extent that there's a column on the driver's side, if somebody backs in, yes.
Okay, um, second, um, uh, Mr. Maltz, concerning your analysis, um, concerning, um, the availability of parking. Uh, if residents own two cars, where would their second car be able to park overnight in, in downtown Madison?
I think Mr. Keller addressed that in his testimony, uh, last time. I believe they would have to obtain a, uh, a parking permit somewhere, make arrangements somewhere else. And, uh, uh, taking a lease in this, uh, building, uh, it's gonna be restricted to, uh, one car per unit. So somebody, uh, signing a lease to come in would know that right away. If they needed a second, uh, uh, spot for a car, they'd have to know ahead of time or, or make arrangements to accommodate that vehicle. I think Mr. Keller, uh, presented some information.
Mr. Keller, do you remember the three lots you mentioned?
I don't, I am.
Okay, well, let me, let me just address the, the member from the audience, the person from the audience. Uh, it's on the website. Mr. Mr. Keller got it off the Borough website, so there was three lots that he cited off of King's Road where there was overnight parking.
So that would, so.
Go ahead.
So whether the, uh, somebody is a, is a visit, a guest who wants to park overnight and does not own a permit would be able to park in any, in those three lots?
That's the understanding. That was what was testified to. So there's overnight, there's overnight parking provided by the Borough. And, uh, Mr. Keller testified there was three of them. I don't want to say them because I don't want to say the wrong one, but I believe he got those from, he testified that he obtained those um, from the Borough website.
His, Mr. Chairman, um, the Borough website list for, uh, uh, overnight parking is King's Road, Maple Avenue, and Prospect Street.
Okay, do you have another question?
Are there any other hands raised?
Yes.
Um, I'll recent, I'll let somebody else, uh, go ahead, and if my question, if my other questions aren't asked, I'll, um, I'll raise my hand again.
Next.
Ms. Reynolds? Yes, thank you. This is Lori Reynolds of Academy Road. My question is, can the twenty-four spaces underground accommodate a, a large SUV? Or is it limited to like a sedan?
You mean, i- i- in, in what sense can they accom- be accommodated spaces?
Like, does it fit just a small car or can it fit an SUV like a Pilot or a Tahoe? Or even a Tesla truck? I'm just asking about if anybody could fit their car in there or no?
Yes.
Okay, and then, um, my question about the overnight parking also is that, does that mean somebody could move their car in the day, park at night, and, and, uh, move it again in the day? Because it seems to me there was a lot of competition for spaces in those lots.
Well, I mean, we're providing ones, every, every, um, one who, uh, leases one of these apartments is gonna know that they get one space.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, um, you know, if they have more than one vehicle, um, then they're going to have to make arrangements for that second vehicle to be parked some, that's what they have.
Right. It would be good to know more about that because, so I'm understanding then they would have to buy a permit from Madison, which in the past as a commuter was a challenge. Um, and then I guess they would have to move their cars in the day.
Well, commuter parking is different. You know, but there is resident overnight parking.
Okay, do you have another question?
Well, so that still isn't answering my question. So the person would have to move it in, in the day and then could leave it there at night?
They, they would have to follow the regulations that the Borough has established for permit parking for residential use.
Okay, so you don't know. That's what I'm hearing, that you don't know that. But as a commuter in the past, it was very difficult to, one, get a permit, and two, find a space. So I wouldn't want this to take away from Madison residents being able to park.
Do you have, do you have any other questions?
Train station. I do. Um, I understand there's one handicap spot. Is that typically enough? Or is, it seems a little short?
It's what's required by code.
Required by code. Okay, thank you. And then my next question is, do either of you live or do business in Madison on, on that street? Like, do you regularly walk there or try to drop your mail off there? Cause it's busy. And so for you to say there's a nominal effect is quite surprising.
Who's that addressed to?
Harold and Eric. Sorry, Mr. Maltz and Mr. Keller.
Hey, the, the analysis is on the capacity and capacity analysis and, uh, traffic counts performed by Mr. Keller's, uh, firm at the two intersections we identified. Um, and the traffic to be imposed, uh, ju- that's calculated for the residential site, which as I pointed out, I agree with, uh, Mr. Keller, uh, and he used the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation. Current addition is the tenth. And by the way, we don't have a choice about using that. The New Jersey Residential, uh, Site Improvement Standards specifies that you have to use that document in calculating trip generation for a residential site. And the numbers that was, that were identified by Mr. Keller, which I confirmed, were, and these are total two-way volumes, are eight cars in the morning peak hour, eleven cars in the PM, and seventeen on a Saturday peak hour. Uh, to give you an idea, uh, eight cars, uh, in the morning, that's about one car every seven or eight minutes in, uh, to and from the site. Uh, eleven cars, that's one about e- every five minutes. Seventeen cars, once again, that's about one every three minutes. These are very nominal flows. And it would be, uh, imperceptible. The analysis was that a level of service C or better is experienced at, uh, uh, the intersection, the critical, uh, movements at the intersections at each end of, uh, of Lincoln, uh, that's a Prospect and, uh, uh, Prospect and, uh, Waverly. And, you know, the, the impact is about a half a second or less increase on the critical.
With all due respect, Mr. Maltz, I do not think that addresses the actual use of a post office. Right? It sounds like that's addressing traffic moving on streets, uh, perpendicular to where the post office is. But when a resident needs to stop and drop something off at the post office, it's, you know, by definition, people running in and out.
Is that a question?
Yes.
Question time right now, please.
Yes, so my question is, uh, this traffic study does not seem to represent what actually happens on the street in front of the post office by the residents of Madison.
Do you agree, Mr. Maltz?
I, I don't agree. Mr. Keller, uh, the traffic counts they performed at each end of Lincoln includes the traffic that went to and from the post office and traveled on that roadway. Mr. Keller can address that, to confirm it himself, because they performed the counts. I think, uh, he should weigh in at this point.
Yeah, yes, it does. It, it does account for the traffic that's, that was on the street from the post office and every other use in the area.
Well, I would just, uh, wonder if the board could be made aware that the, the way we actually use it is to go in and, is to park, go in and out of the post office. And it's very, uh, congested there currently. And maybe the traffic study happened to be for all the condos in the area were populated. I don't know, but it certainly doesn't represent reality in March in Madison. Uh, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you're muted.
If, uh, if you don't have another question, we're moving on.
Thank you. I appreciate you are listening to my questions.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other hands? Uh, Fran, you're muted. No? Okay.
Yes.
No hands?
Yes.
So we can move on?
No, my hand's raised.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're just having a little communication. Who's, who's speaking right now?
Dorothy O'Brien.
All right.
Dorothy muted herself.
Oh, I did not.
Okay, so, but, but first of all, let's take it one at a hand, one at a time. Lori Reynolds, please put her back in the public. She's right now, she's up on the panelists. And then, uh, Dorothy, why don't you, um, again, say your last name?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Dorothy O'Brien, thirty-eight Crestwood Drive.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, I have a question concern, um, well, first off, um, uh, Mr. Keller, who's paying for your time and, and your, and your, and your study?
The applicant.
Okay, so, um, I am con- I am, uh, concerned, what, is Madison going to pay to have a ta- a, a traffic study done?
We, we have. Maltz is the board's witness.
Sorry?
Mr. Maltz is testifying for the board.
Okay, but it's based on Mr. Keller's study, though.
No, he reviewed it and commented. He's the traffic expert. That's the way the process always works.
Okay, um, I didn't hear mention in the study concerning, um, yeah, uh, deliveries and, uh, and tr- the traffic, uh, parking, uh, not parking, I'm sorry. I didn't hear mo- mention concerning, um, tenants moving in and out of the building, you know, the, the impact.
I think we talked about that two or three times, and we've already filled in questions about that.
Um, I was told to hold my questions and ask that the, uh, the traffic expert, so I'm.
But if they're repetitive, we don't need to hear it again, and Mr. Chairman's right.
Well, I didn't get an answer. My, I didn't get an answer the last time. I was told, I was cut off, similar to your cutting me off now, and I was told to wait to talk to the traffic expert. So I'm, I, so I'm sorry, so let me just go on again. Um, the, the impact concerning deliveries to the building, whether it be tenants moving in or out, which obviously will take hours with large vehicles, and delivery of other large vehicles such as, you know, TV deliveries, Best Buy, Amazon, et cetera. What kind of study's been done, again, to, concerning the impact on the traffic flow for people to go in and out of the post office?
So either one of the traffic experts could respond to the question.
I think Mr. Keller should respond.
Okay, Mr. Keller.
Thanks, Mr. Maltz. Um, you know, for move-in, move-out activities, um, those are all always scheduled. Um, you know, these are apartments, these are, uh, you know, I don't remember the exact size, but they're not large units. Um, it does not take hours to unload. It, or load, uh, a, a moving van. Um, these are smaller trucks because of the size of the units. Um, they would be scheduled. And, um, you know, that can be worked through building management, that they don't do it when the post office is busy. Um, it's a management, uh, action. Um, no different than the loading that occurs now for the businesses that are on the street. Um, for the most part, once, uh, um, you know, the, the building is leased, uh, the turnover of the units is going to be infrequent. Again, we're talking about twenty-four units. Um, and any other deliveries, you know, for the most part, are going to be, uh, mail or UPS. Um, and they're going to park where they parked today for the deliveries that they make to the other, um, businesses and residences along the street.
So, but the delivery schedule, if there is a schedule, that would be dependent on the, the management of the building enforcing that schedule or enacting or, and enforcing a schedule? That's not a town requirement?
You know, for move-in, move-out, that's a re- that, the, the management will, uh, direct attendance as to when they will be able to move in. Um, and that's typical for, for these type of buildings. Um, as to, if there's any, uh, Borough regulations as far as when loading their deliveries can be made, I'm not aware of any. Um, but that doesn't mean that the code doesn't have that someplace.
All right, so any last question? Because we need to move on. No?
Mr. Chairman, I do have someone else with their hand raised.
All right, I want you to, I want you to put the, the last two members of the public into.
They are in, they are in the attendees' room.
Um, the attendees' room?
Yes.
Oh, I'm looking at it on my screen.
Not in the panelists' room.
Why are they showing here?
They are in the attendees' room.
Okay.
But I do have one more, um, hand raised. It's Peter Steck.
Okay.
I think, oh, he's Mr. Wolfson's client, uh, expert, isn't he?
No.
Oh, he's Mr. Simon's expert.
Well, Mr. Simon had a different planner last time. Why don't we ask Mr. Steck his capacity is, is.
Yeah, why is here? Yeah, okay.
I, I, if you can hear me, I'm here on a later application. I happen, uh, I didn't believe that I raised my hand, so I'm just watching.
Okay. Thank you, Peter.
And. There is, um, one more hand raised from Dorothy O'Connor. I'm sorry, Dorothy O'Brien.
Uh, Ms. O'Brien, one last question.
Uh, I didn't have my, uh, hand raised. I think that was from last time.
Okay.
Okay, there are no other hands raised.
All right, I'm closing the public portion. So, um, that concludes that aspect of it. Um, so I think we should move beyond traffic now. Any objections, Gary?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Um, I just had, uh, it, it doesn't pertain to, uh, vehicular traffic. It does pertain to one of the waivers, and it was for the sidewalk width. Um, if you recall, uh, that one-story building to the east has a one-stoop exit out onto a sidewalk in it. Because of that, the sidewalk doesn't meet the, uh, minimum required width of six feet. It now is down slightly. And, uh, I just see that as a tripping hazard, so to the applicant for the, uh, next meeting. And when you look at revisions, you may want to look at maybe putting just a very, uh, small railing or bollard at the corner of that step. So, you know, people that have their, uh, are, are, uh, sidetracked by looking at their phone when they're walking the sidewalk, uh, don't slam, uh, their foot into the stoop. So it's, I hope it's something you could, uh, address at the next hearing.
We will address it, Mr. Stern.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, so with that, I wanted to, um, Mr. Stern, we had talked about putting on the record some memos received.
Sure, um, yeah, as part of the, uh, the submission and, and the protocol, the application was transmitted to, uh, Downtown Development Commission, uh, that reviews these types of applications occurring in the downtown. Uh, they review the application as well as, uh, subcommittee reviews, uh, the signs, uh, any freestanding signs or facade signs. Um, the application has also been forwarded to the Historic Preservation Commission, who's been involved with this now for quite some time. Uh, in fact, uh, the application, when it was first initiated, was before the planning board, and the, uh, Historic Preservation had gotten involved at that point. Um, and then finally, uh, we do have a report from, uh, the Environmental Commission, I think a number of reports. And we have one short, uh, review memo from the Shade Tree Commission. So these are all the, the Borough's commissions and committees that get involved in the review of these applications. On top of that, we of course have fire and police that review these applications, but, uh, the Historic Preservation Commission, DDC, uh, Environmental Commission, I believe, uh, uh, are in attendance at this meeting, have representation. So I think it would be, uh, good if we, uh, uh, went over their, their reviews at this point.
That's perfect. Um, we have Mr. John, Mr. John Morris and Mr. Eric Range with us.
Good, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, welcome. What I, what I thought we could do is, you know, you've, you've submitted, uh, two memos, right? But let's, let's go with the, uh, the one of January twenty-sixth that addresses the overall. two memos, right? Let's let's go with the the one of January 26th that addresses the overall opinion of a not the not the sign facade, the other one, the overall opinion about this. And I thought maybe you could open up and tell us just a little bit about DDC, its membership. So people understand how important it is and what you guys do.
Why don't I swear them in since this is the nature of test. Mr. Range and Mr. Morris, you both do sound like swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
Yes.
Thank you. And I assume you're both officers in the DDC, or I don't know what the proper term, but
I I am the current vice chairman, yes.
Okay. Mr. Morris, just
Part of the executive committee of the DDC.
Thank you. That's fine.
So you have the floor for a little while. So why don't you tell us about DDC?
Sure. So just by way of introductions, again, I'm Eric Range. I've served on the Downtown Development Commission for the last 16 years and currently serve as its vice chair, and I'm a prior chairperson. I currently serve as a member of the Sign and Facade Committee, which you noted, we'll talk about that memo shortly, as well as chairing the Marketing and Economic Redevelopment Subcommittee. Just for those that may be unfamiliar with the DDC, we hope that's not the case, but we've got lots of members of the public who who may not know what we do day to day. We're one of the Borough Commissions appointed by the mayor and endorsed by the the council. And and our goal is really, and our purpose is to study the future of the downtown district in regard to its economic growth and development, to develop plans for the redevelopment of the downtown district, to advise the downtown community on improvements requiring private sector action, advise the mayor and council on improvements requiring local government action, coordinate redevelopment activities in the downtown district, and foster a close working relationship between all segments of the Madison community, and to analyze and plan for the impact on downtown district development in other areas of the borough. So you can see why we might have an interest in 14 Lincoln Place. The DDC is comprised of members who are a cross section of the Madison community, including business owners, commercial property owners, residents, and representatives from our higher education institutions, Board of Education, Arts, and the Chamber of Commerce, which is by way of how John joins us, and and other members of our community. So that's a little bit about the the DDC. Does that cover that question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it does.
Great. So a as you noted, we've submitted two memos, and I'll I'll talk to the first. The first one is just the DDC's general support for the project. The DDC really sees the mixed use redevelopment of 14 Lincoln Place as an overall positive addition to our downtown. The design has certainly come a long way. As as you'll know, this the draft of the memo actually started as a draft of the memo to HPC when the application was before them. And we we liked it then, and and we certainly appreciate the evolution that has happened with the input from HPC and the zoning board. Ultimately, this project also aligns with the Urbanomics Study, which was commissioned by the Borough and the DDC a few years ago. If you're not familiar with that particular study, it was an independent market analysis complete completed partially due to the closure of Blue Ridge Mountain Sports, which was in the in the James Building at that prominent corner. And the rumors at the same time that Bowtie Cinemas was imminently closing at the end of 2015. Those were seen as two potential big hits to to the downtown, and we wanted to see what actions the Borough should be taking to mitigate those losses. Of course, we now know that Bowtie ultimately did not cease operation until 2017. But the study did ultimately grow out of the genuine concern for the future of Madison's downtown. The study itself, the study document is is quite long and extensive and talks about streetscapes and the arts and all sorts of things. But one of the biggest takes takeaways of the market analysis was to have Madison's downtown continue to thrive well into the future was that we needed to increase the residential population in the downtown core. And of course, during this this study and after, we've seen recent developments at the Green Village Road School property as well as along Greenwood Avenue. But the study suggests we still have capacity and need for these residential units that are suggested for 14 Lincoln Place. So I think that covers kind of the thoughts and feelings outlined in our memo. I'll give it to John if he has anything additional that maybe I missed in in my overview.
Thank you, Eric. I just want to touch base about the Madison Chamber of Commerce. For those who are uninitiated at this point, we're founded in 1943, and we're an independent business league, and it's run by the members, and we have about 185 dues paying members. Most of those are businesses. We have a few sole proprietorships. What we're about essentially is increasing the level of prosperity and progress in the downtown for the benefit, obviously, of our members from Madison itself, residents, visitors, students, the whole litany. We're a community-based organization. And that's why I thought it was important for me to be here to represent the DDC and also represent my business. My family owns a business in town. We have for four generations. It's located on King's Road. And to get back to the ergonomic study, which I think is very important, if you folks haven't all had a chance to look at it, it's 150 odd pages. It includes surveys. It includes polling results. It's very comprehensive. The takeaways I take from it that are applicable to what we're talking about here are in the matrix of recommendations, and I'll just touch on those real briefly. First one that's important here is adjust zoning as needed to remove barriers to infill development. Of course, infill development is very important because what it does is it uses existing commercial property as opposed to getting into a sprawly type of the situation where the downtown grows and encroaches into residential areas. The next point in the ergonomic study is balance new development with historic preservation. That calls for a balance, and and of course, that's what HPC does, and but the chamber and also the DDC are very sensitive to that. The Madison's bones were made on history and will continue to be made on history. The third one I'd like to mention is to increase population density in the downtown. Some people think the density is is a bad word, but in this situation, what it means is that get more people invested personally by living downtown, whether it's in apartments or they're renting or even owning. To retailers like me and and my 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 colleagues, what that does is it increases foot traffic, and that can lead to increase in economic rewards. But the best thing about is it breathes new life into the downtown. We live in a very competitive area with the towns close by, and Madison always has to work hard and work harder to to stay in the same league with these other towns. That was another goal of the ergonomic study. And then if I can just skip over to another page real quick, it goes to foot traffic. The goal of the ergonomic study was to encourage park and walk. I park and walk a lot from my business, and I walk to the train station to go to the city and also go to the post office, and I've been there at various hours. Yes, there's lots of traffic on Lincoln Place when people are hurried at lunchtime doing this and that. But in the morning and the evening, it's not necessarily a busy place at all. I see it daily. I see it at different times, and I've seen it for decades. So I think Lincoln Place would definitely be able to absorb the minimal amount of residential traffic that's been described in the traffic studies. What else should we add here, Eric, that that's
You've done a pretty good job so far. What I thought I should do is just open up for any questions from either the applicant or the board members.
Mr. Chairman, I I have no questions. I know that they refer to the other report from the Sign and Facade Committee, so I assume that they're going to get to that as well.
Okay, anybody have any questions? If not, we'll move on to the Sign and Facade. Okay, so it's clear you're you're supportive of the application. Why don't why don't we go to the other the other memo, which is briefly?
Sure. Yeah, this is a quick one. Obviously, there's not a whole lot more to say beyond what's on the paper there. You know, ultimately, the the sign and facade package, we felt that it was, the master sign plan was clean and simple. And we appreciated sort of the the mix of materials. We appreciated the inclusion of blade signs, which are the more pedestrian friendly, which is something the DDC has been pushing now for for more than a decade. So we we certainly appreciate that, and we like the concept of the historic plaque and where that's located and just the overall sign sign package and its cohesive look. There was one concern, and I think I'll just couch the concern by saying, which was about the backlit nature of the signs. You know, the DDC just wants to make sure that any of that backlighting is done appropriately and doesn't overwhelm the space. But there are certainly lots of examples of good backlit signs in in Madison. You know, something like Waverly TV on Waverly Place, or frankly, even the DDC and Borough's own alleyway signage is, you know, a piece of lit plexiglass with the with the letters in front. So while that was expressed as a as a concern, I think if done, you know, tastefully, we're we're in favor of that as well.
Okay, so there's going to be some more discussion later on about signage, and if you guys are available, you can always weigh in at the next meeting. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for appearing tonight. It's very important that when somebody sends a memo that if they'd like to make comments, they, you know, that we give them a chance to do that. So we appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's move to the Historic Preservation Mission, HPC. And there was some memos there. And is Ms. Foster here? Janet? You're you're muted. I can't hear you.
I don't see Janet, but I did promote.
I see Mary Ann, Mary Ellen.
Mary Ellen Lenahan, and I also promoted
You promoted me, Jill Rhodes. But I believe Janet might be signed in under James Foster. She said she was going to just sit beside him and take over, so she might be signed in there.
Who's going to speak for HPC?
Janet Foster.
Okay. She'll do the talking. All right, so.
Okay.
There you go. Hello, Ms. Foster. How are you?
Fine. Thank you for having me join you tonight. Thank you for that technical wizardry. I swear to tell the truth if Gary needs that.
Gary, you're muted, Gary.
There we go. Janet, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Okay, thank you. And then before you talk, let me just jump in real quickly. There was some email, I guess it's actually yesterday, to that I authored to just clarify and confirm the role of the HPC in this format. The land use law specifically provides for advisory comments from the Historic Preservation to the Land Use Board, in this case, the Board of Adjustment, and provides that you the HPC sends a written report and then produces an individual to explain and answer questions, and that's why Janet's here.
Indeed. Thank you, Gary. You should have in your packet a memo prepared January 26th. You also have a memo from the HPC for September 18th, 2020, which was the last time as a full board, we had seen and commented on the the Saxon Real Estate development. There does appear to be a little bit of catch up, you know, we're we're two years ahead of you or or behind you. I'm not sure how to describe it. So there's some minor inconsistencies that I think just need to be worked out with the passage of time. Generally, I think we're going in the right direction. The HPC did decide at our September 2020 meeting, and it's in your memo, that the last drawings we saw showed a reconstructed ticket booth on the exterior of the building, on the post office side of the building. And we had concluded that was actually unnecessary, a reconstruction when there was no longer any theater use in the building seemed frankly odd. I know Mr. Wolfson heard that discussion, said that would be great. I'm not sure that ever communicated to the architect. Maybe there was a reason why he prefers to keep this reproduction ticket booth shape in the back end of the building. I'd love to talk to Mr. Gertler about that at some point, but overall, you know, we're we're getting to the right direction here. One of the questions you raised last week when this was discussed, Mr. Santura, was that there are a number of checkpoints that came through the HPC resolution that could be and probably should be worked into a zoning board resolution, since you seem to have more capacity and authority to to signify these things about the preservation and reuse of the cast stone plaque, for instance, about a clear process for removing and preserving the original ticket booth. I know there was conversation last week about the chandelier and the architects that, oh, yes, yes, we'll try to reuse that. But ways to sort of make that happen, I I am heartened to hear you say that it should be incorporated into resolutions through the zoning board and would certainly encourage you to do that.
Well, let me just interrupt. Yes, so the the process that the HPC completed resulted in mandatory conditions, and three were appealed, but all the others were accepted.
Right.
And so that language, you know, we intend to incorporate that into into the resolution, the solution for this. And then also in in looking at it, the conditions, a number of those conditions, there were conditions five, six, seven, eight, which all mandatory conditions is from your the HPC's resolution.
Right.
We'll talk about preservation of all of these things, these objects, chandelier, booth, et cetera, et cetera. And then you, the HPC has essentially review and approval authority.
Right.
So so I I talked to Mr. Hall about it, and at least my my feeling is that you still have that, and you should continue to work with the applicant and and their historic expert to get to get these things preserved. So I know you're asking for certain things here in this memo, but I think these are things that really Gary, what did you think?
Yeah, I think what we talked about is that certainly the Historic Preservation Commission, except their conditions weren't appealed, they were presumably accepted by the applicant and remain in effect now. As far as working out the fine points of that, that's not the zoning board's job. The zoning board, certainly, if they approve this new development, can cross-reference, acknowledge and refer to what the HPC did, but I don't think it's their job to get down into refining, clarifying and and negotiating further on those items. Because the zoning board is looking at the new development, not the demolition process. So we're we're acknowledging what happened in the HPC's actions in that regard, and we're not undoing them, but I I'm not sure there's
Well, I appreciate your support in in moving forward with this because there just is a lot of detail on on some of those things re in the salvage and reusing of certain items. So I thank you for your for your continued support on that.
I would say I would say continue to have dialogue with the applicant about, but I think they've been working with you in good faith, correct?
Yes, if if and and one of the questions is, well, we'll talk about it later, but we are we are in touch with them and would hope to continue to be so. I guess some of the other main points on our memo resolve around comments on the signage and appreciating that there was a full sign plan for this. So we look forward to that next week, and certainly supporting a variance that would allow the plaque and the interpretive materials that were Preservation Commission request to be included in the building without penalty to the developer because of an overage on signage. If if there's a concern about overage on signage, I would say it's it's a new sign, not the interpretive plaques that would get shaved. So you have our material, and I guess if there are any questions from from your members from the Historic Preservation Commission, now would be a good time to ask me, and we'll see if I can help you.
I don't have any questions, other than I do appreciate all that you guys did, that HPC did on this because I think it did a great job relative to preserving aspects of the theater. It was very thoughtfully done. I don't have any particular questions, and that's why I said I called it out at the last meeting. You know, various mandatory conditions that are in place because I think they're important. So if the board wants to ask questions or one of our experts wants to ask any questions, please do so now. For the applicant.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, good. So then I think what we'll do then is, oh, sorry, Russell.
I just have a question for Mrs. Foster. I mean, the Historic Commission, I mean, it was a good, very thorough presentation at the last hearing by Mr. Gertler. I guess you would be in agreement with that? Or I saw some concerns about, you know, a side elevation? I guess what I'm looking at is, this is a new building going up along Lincoln Place and, you know, with a certain style to it. And what is the opinion on the HPC providing that?
I think the issue of the timing issue here is that the building, the HPC reviewed and talked about in our resolution of July 2019, is not exactly this building. There have been changes to the building subsequently redesigned. And I'm aware that there may be continued redesign at this moment because of input through this board's hearing process. But certainly the and I will be the last one to comment about three or four stories and the mezzanine issue, which was sort of touched on last time, and is something for your board to consider. Jeff, Mr. Gertler, did make a lot of points in discussing the traditional building type of Madison and how he was respecting that with design of the new building. However, the traditional building plan of Madison will always have windows in a hierarchy of largest on the first floor, and they tend to reduce in size. Stay the same or reduce in size as you go up. This new elevation, particularly in the sides, has extra large size windows, double sized windows for those upper level apartments on the upper floor. It flips the hierarchy. And I think does not respect the traditional building form as despite what efforts have been made with the storefront and the materiality of the building. There is, however, an opportunity when the building is really finished and designed for a quick chat with the HPC. Again, because our ordinance does require that new buildings in the historic district will have aesthetic exterior oversight from the HPC. I am not sure, maybe the applicant tell me. Is this building finished? But this is not the review, this is not the building exactly that HPC reviewed a year and a half ago. Our resolution talks about dark brick and light brick, there's no more light brick. And that's really fine, but it means we're looking at something slightly different. So when this is perfected, we may have further comments about particular materials. And I'd be interested in knowing how the window situation resolves based on your discussion about is how that mezzanine works and the upper level works.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I can just speak to that, tomorrow represents the second anniversary of our first appearance before the HPC. We had a total of six appearances before the HPC. Their input led to significant changes in the design that were incorporated in the past design and which carry through into this. We do acknowledge that this design, to the extent that there are some differences to the facade and the structure are different. At this point, the HPC is in a recommendation phase, and they have submitted their recommendation to your board. So this is the plan that we are proposing, it is the one to be voted on. They have confirmed our compliance with the conditions. And I certainly hope, Ms. Foster, that we have amply demonstrated both by our extensive and good faith participation in your procedures, our hiring of a historic architect, that we will comply with what are binding conditions. So we have satisfied them all. We have worked with the Postal Service and New Jersey Transit to come up with a protocol for both construction and demolition. And I would just like Jeff Gertler to speak very briefly as to the window issue. And I think he has one brief comment as to the recommendations from the HPC as to this design. Jeff?
Thank you, and happy anniversary, Peter.
Please go ahead, Mr. Gertler.
Thank you. Well, we, a couple of things, and I will keep it brief, Peter, don't worry. You know, the windows that you look at immediately adjacent to our building, the neighboring buildings, which are the post office and the train station, because they are the buildings to the left of us as you're facing the building, and across the street. To the right, there's an alleyway, and then there's a one story building that has no upper story windows. So our windows are basically comparable to our immediate neighbors' buildings' windows. Those windows sometimes are longer and sometimes they're wider. But collectively, we fit into an overall pattern, which we think is compatible with our immediate adjacent neighbors, as well as an overall downtown look of windows throughout the larger, you know, Waverly Place and Main Street sets of buildings and windows. I don't, and the other.
Thank you, you're right that the train station does have big windows on the top, you're right.
Right. But we're not looking to, and just looking at the ordinance of our municipality. It says that we're not to look at other buildings and replicate them, that our buildings are supposed to represent our own time that we're building them. We are looking at this building as something that is obviously being built in 2021 or 2022. But it reflects the fabric of downtown Madison. It doesn't replicate anything, and we're not trying to do that. And the ordinance doesn't ask us to replicate anything. We're really trying to fit in as a good neighbor. So there will be differences, and we think the differences are helping Madison move more to the future than get frankly stuck in the past. We don't really have good apartments downtown. We want to create good apartments downtown, and we want people to move here and stay here. Stay here during COVID and stay here for a long time and become citizens in Madison. Not have an apartment with a lack of light, a lack of windows, and want to leave at the first chance they can. We want them to become real good and effective Madison citizens. We think having a building with a little more space to it is going to be one of the drivers that will attract people to Madison.
Jeff, does your design respect the downtown design guidelines?
It totally does. I think it does 100%.
Thank you.
I just want to say a couple of things here. Number one is, and I asked this last time, was mandatory condition 11, I think. I think the applicant has conformed to that, and that is the design specifications, if you want to call it, or design guidelines set forth by HPC. I'm not going to read it all, but I think it describes the building. And then also, looking at the HPC ordinance in 1127C2, it says, "It's not the intent of this chapter to discourage contemporary architecture expression, where they're encouraged new construction which emulates existing buildings of historic architectural style, but rather to preserve the integrity and authenticity of the Historic Preservation Districts and to ensure the compatibility of new structures therein." And you got to look at this in a reasonable way, I think, and say, does this building rise to the level of being incompatible? And I don't think it does. And I think that this passage alone gives a certain degree of architectural license for an applicant to design what they think they'd like to create, given the other constraints. So I don't agree that this design needs to go back to HPC for sign off and approval. I think this is the application as it's designed, and that's what we would vote on, unless you disagree, Gary.
No, and yeah, on that, I mean, the current application was submitted in, I don't know, August, September, whenever it was. And apparently it was looked at by the HPC in September this year. Now, whatever they presented in two years ago is not before this board, was never filed with this board. And so I don't think, I think you had, the board is looking for comments on the current plan. Now, what's before us currently is, I guess the plan hasn't really changed at all. They've agreed to some site revisions. But that design the board has seen, and thinks that they're looking for, and we have gotten comments from HPC on that. But I don't think it's going to be revisited, and I don't think we're, the starting point for you is what you saw two, three years ago. Starting point for this board is what we all looked at at the first meeting in January of 2021. Though I agree with Mr. Santura, I think the board generally is looking for input, has gotten input from the HPC, but they're not looking for future input. And I, with Mr. Wilson, that whatever this board approves will be approved by a land use board. And under the land use law, it doesn't go back for design recommendations. Whatever you did before flows through and applies, I agree. But I think you're either with the board or not. It's not a, now is the time to give your input, and the board is looking to consider, is considering it. But there's not going to be a future step where you, in my mind, provide more.
I don't, I'm not. That doesn't surprise me, and I'm not upset. I have one very specific question, if I can ask. In September, Mr. Wolfson, we had a long discussion about the ticket booth and the metal reproduction ticket booth and getting rid of the ticket booth because it didn't seem to serve either historical purpose or contemporaries' purpose. I still see the ticket booth in, and we, in the memo we exchanged in September, we agreed that that didn't have to be there. Is that simply an oversight that it didn't get to the architect to remove? Or was there a strong feeling on the part of the developer or someone else that 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 extension on the first floor would stay? It's almost minor enough that I have to say, well, if you want to do it, go ahead and do it. But it just points to what I understood our conversation in September, that it would go away, and it hasn't. So maybe you could just answer that.
I agree 100% with you, Madam Chairwoman. I was surprised to see the homage to the ticket booth still there. It was originally implemented into the plans to try to make the HPC happy. We had extensive discussions, as you just reported. So we're happy to take the homage out or leave it in as the board determines.
So which board determines?
Well, this board.
To see it, if the board is in love with it, they can leave it in if they want to, I guess on your recommendation, indicate that it be deleted. We have no objection to that at all, and I'm confirming the discussion we had with the HPC.
We had it.
Anyway, let's just cut to the chase here. Ms. Foster, what's your recommendation? Do you want it removed?
I do, I do. It's false history, it doesn't. Its location is on that post office elevation. It's behind the famous LED sign with the cutout letters that last week was explained is helping to buffer the side view of a first floor apartment. So if it's behind there, A, who's going to see it, and B, the question is why? I think the HPC has committed to seeing that the original ticket booth is preserved in some way. Maybe not at that site, but I think the authenticity of the real thing is more important than creating an homage at the back door. And we had worked together and said, that's not even necessary. So I think, yeah, there's just a little bit of a catch up between conversations and maybe redoing drawings, if there's a profound reason why somebody really wants it. Talk to me, you know.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, if it pleases the board, we'd like to amend our application that will not be on the final plans.
Very good.
And Mr. Chairman, just one other thing, Ms. Foster indicated that it will, the original ticket booth will not likely be in this building. It will not be in this building. We took great care to have a thorough discussion. The Borough has already confirmed that they will take stewardship of it and will find an appropriate location in consultation with the HPC for the original ticket booth.
That's my understanding of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wilson, for clarifying that and some of the other issues around brick color.
We're going to have, we're going to have, we're going to have to move on.
Evolution, okay. Well, thank you for letting me present this. The written documents are there. And we wish you well in continuing to review this.
So Gary, we need to move on. I think we need to have some other applications, so this might be a logical breakpoint. What do you think?
Yeah, we had a plan to hear the one residential, the one that we heard in January, and they went back to the drawing board, it's a replacement residence. And then the goal was to hear the Angelica Properties application on Elm Street continuation, they revised their plans and potentially wrapped that one up, that was the hope. So I agree, we're halfway through the meeting now, so.
Yeah, so I think, because we went about an hour and 15, Mr. Wilson, so I think what we're going to do is we're going to adjourn this application at this point, and you'll be carried to, I think, the regular meeting, right? April?
April 8th.
I think it was great that the special was too soon.
Yeah, that's April 8.
So we'll carry it to the April, April 8, I believe, is the date.
And that meeting's at 7:30?
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct.
Further notice required, April 8.
And then.
Presumably, I guess, starting with this one and maybe the whole night, that remains to be seen.
So what we could do is, Mr. Wilson, stay in contact with Mr. Hall in terms of where we pick up exactly what needs to occur. And we'll see where you are on your engineering and other solutions, right?
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time, and we will see you soon, April 8, thank you.
All right, thank you.
You very much.
Will I be needed at the next meeting, or am I essentially finished, unless something is submitted related to traffic?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, unless we, unless we request you, you won't be.
Okay, thank you very much.
That sounds right, Gary.
Yeah, yeah, now, I guess, I don't know, we talked about, Mr. Wolf, did you look, you looked at the Angela, Angelica Properties one, didn't you?
No, I didn't. This is the only.
Then you don't, you can, you're done for the night, then. I don't see any traffic there, issue there personally, unless the chairman disagrees, but.
No, that's it. No.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Appreciate your efforts. Okay, so we're going to move to the next application.
Okay. Can you give me one second just to bring people in?
Yeah, I'm still seeing Lori Reynolds and Peter Steck on mic screen.
And you took me out and then you put me back in.
Yeah. And.
Jim and Helen can come back now, there's Helen.
That's, I'm.
Here's Jim, okay, great.
Okay, so let me.
This is Novak, I think we're going to go to, so.
Yeah. Corson. Could everybody just please go ahead? Well done.
I'm coming out. You have to take me out.
Let me go in first. Doug Asrell. And Paul Ricky. Is Mr. Ricky here? Mr. Novak?
Nancy and Bob Novak are here.
Yes. Do you know if Mr. Ricky is attending?
He is.
Okay, yes, I see him.
And, and also Doug Azrell, our architect.
Yes, I promote it, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, is everybody here?
Yes, and I am going to. Okay.
Good.
Yep.
Okay, so, well, this is, um, this is. Application case, case number Z twenty oh twenty-three, Robert Novak, block forty-five oh two lot ten, sixty-nine Garfield Avenue. So this was, uh, if you construct a two and a half story dwelling. And it's a redesign, and, uh, so we welcome you back, and we look forward to hearing what you've changed.
Okay. Um, Pete, Pete Corson here, I guess I'll start. Um, so as you're aware, we were last here on January fourteenth, and. We listened to your comments and concerns, and mainly they had to do with the design of the house and the impervious coverage. So we did go back to the drawing board, and you'll hear substantial testimony about the new house design from our project architect. Uh, but what I'd like to do is start with the lot grading plan, and I'm going to share that plan with you.
Yes, please.
So as you can see in the center, that shows the.
First off, sorry, why don't you identify that plan and the date, to make sure we all have the same document?
Yeah, this is the lot grading plan sheet one of five, last revised February eighteen, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
So in the center, you could see the subject lot and the proposed new house. Which is situated pretty much in the center of the lot. And if you recall, uh, the previous house was larger, and it also included a, uh, an appendage in the front, which provided a side. Entry garage and a courtyard in this area, and the driveway was shifted over to the west from where it's shown currently. Uh, this garage, this house is more, um, in keeping with the neighborhood. It's, uh, a side loaded garage as well. It does not have the appendage in the front. And, um, the house itself has been situated on the property so that it adheres to the front, rear, and side setback requirements. Now, when you compare it with the previous application. There's also a reduction in the building footprint or building coverage and the impervious coverage. And with this plan, we have a building coverage of. One thousand nine hundred and sixty-three square feet. And previously it was two thousand five hundred and twenty-nine square feet, so that's a reduction of five hundred and sixty-six square feet in building coverage. Uh, likewise, there was a reduction in impervious coverage, uh, that dropped down from. Four thousand six hundred and seventy-two square feet to the current. Plan, which is three thousand six hundred and ninety-seven square feet. So that's a total re- the reduction of nine hundred and seventy-five square feet. Also, uh, the other plan had a, uh, two other variances. One of them was from, for the front yard setback, and that was forty feet for the garage appendage in the front. And the other was for a forty-six foot rear yard setback, which was also a variance. Both been eliminated with this plan.
What's the, what's the new impervious figure?
New impervious coverage is three thousand six hundred and ninety-seven square feet.
And what's that percentage?
Twenty-three point nine nine percent.
Okay, so versus twenty, okay?
Right, so. If you look in the, in the chart in the upper right on this plan, you can see that there still are two variances, however, they've been. Substantially reduced. The, uh, impervious coverage went from thirty point three one percent down to twenty-three point nine nine. And the building coverage went from. Sixteen point four one percent down to twelve point seven four percent. And previously, we did have a dry well system to control stormwater runoff, uh, that was located. In this area. It's currently been shifted slightly to the west. It's the same type of a system. And, uh, the reason we shifted to accommodate the new driveway location. Um, however, the difference is that previously. That dry well system just controlled runoff from the roof, and we know that you were concerned about the overall impervious coverage. And the effect of the runoff on, uh, on the surrounding area, so, uh, in addition to the roof runoff, we've also added a catch basin. That's going to pick up approximately. About eight hundred and thirty-nine square feet of driveway area in addition to the roof. That all gets conveyed to the dry well system, which has been designed per borough standards. Um, other than that, uh, the other change would be an impervious coverage. Patio in the back that was eliminated, and that was replaced by a deck, which is not considered impervious surface. So that was a plus also. Uh, there's also a proposed vinyl board fence, which was not shown previously, and that's around the rear yard area. And, um. We also show a landscape screen, because that was one of your comments for the AC units and a generator on the right side of the house. So you can see that there are three evergreen shrubs proposed in that area. Um, other than that, the other minor change would be in the building height itself. That's gone down from thirty-one point nine feet to thirty-one point seven. But that really, uh, that's a summary of the changes, and, uh, like I said, you'll hear more about the. Uh, building itself from our project architect. And, um, I'm open for questions at this time.
I don't have any questions. Does the board have any questions, Mr. Corson?
Uh, just one, Mr. Corson.
I just had one quick, you know, it's more comment than a question, well, it's a question. The, uh, the, the, this lot is substantially undersized, so that if you had a conforming lot, you wouldn't need any variances, would you? And I'm looking at a lot size of fifteen thousand. Required twenty-five thousand, the twenty percent would be five thousand.
That's true.
And, uh, twenty-five hundred in the building area, so in both parameters, if you had a conforming lot, you'd be okay.
True.
You know, I think that's significant, and before that wasn't the case, is my recollection.
One question, Mr. Corson. Uh, I just, just eyeballing it with the change in the rear setback. It looks to me as though the, uh, permeable area in the backyard is. About twenty-five percent bigger than it was under the original plan. Is that roughly speaking, uh, correct?
Uh, the pervious or impervious?
The pervious coverage.
Pervious coverage should have been increased in the rear yard, just by the fact that the patio was reduced and it was replaced by a deck.
All right, and my, my point is, it looks to me as though with the increase in the rear yard setback. And the replacement of the patio with the deck. It looks as though you've got, again, very round numbers, about twenty-five percent more backyard to absorb rainwater. Would that be about right by your, by your calculation?
You know, I didn't run that calculation, but, uh, since we do have a larger rear yard setback, it certainly increased, that's for sure.
Yeah, I was just dividing fifty, fifty-eight and, and forty-six, that's all.
Yeah, it's the same width, so you're correct.
Any other questions? All right, so I'm going to go to the public really quick, because if we're going to switch witnesses, then we need to go to the public and see if there's any questions or hands raised from the public, uh, for questions from Mr. Corson.
Hold on.
Okay, so next witness, please.
No, hold on. I have Alan Sawyer.
Oh, sure, yeah, he's the neighbor. Yeah.
Correct.
Absolutely. Hello, Mr. Sawyer. Are you muted, Mr. Sawyer?
Good evening, how about this?
Very good.
All right, um, and so. Um, I have a question, a little bit of a question on the impervious coverage. From the standpoint that, um, while, uh, the new design is being compared to the previous proposal. Um, as being a reduction, uh, when compared to the existing. Uh, there is much less rear yard, um, area. Uh, between the new struck, the new proposed structure and what is existing there. Which will certainly add additional runoff, uh, into my property.
Yeah.
That's an assumption, that's not a, you're not a, an expert.
The, the reason, the reason why there is a house such a drastic house shift. And more of a, a backyard with the existing condition is that the existing house violates the, uh, minimum front yard setback. It's roughly forty feet from the front property line, and it's required to be fifty feet back. So, um. But to answer your question, uh, all of, the, all of the runoff from the existing house is uncontrolled currently. It doesn't go into a dry well system. It does not go into the ground. So with this proposal, we're improving it. We're taking that, that roof. If you look at the plan here, we have a proposed house. That half of the back, the back half of the house is in the backyard or in the lawn area, you could say, uh, of the existing conditions, but. Instead of having runoff from the existing roof go that way, we're taking that and putting it into the dry well system. In addition, all of this driveway adjacent to the garage on the left side of the house is all getting put into the dry well system as right. So, uh, in the front and in addition to the house, so. As far as the backyard goes, we're actually improving the runoff. There's, there's no, uh, there's no detriment to your property.
So the square, the square footage of that's now being captured into dry well system, what did that tally up to? The, the roof and the driveway that's captured, what was that number?
The roof and the dry well, and, and the, uh, roof and the driveway total area going to the dry well is two thousand eight hundred and two square feet.
So, Mr. Sawyer, basically what's happening is there's, there was, uh. Or going forward, there, there's two thousand eight hundred square feet of surface. Now going into dry well that was formerly going into the yard area, your yard, their, their yard, wherever it was going. So that would represent a significant improvement, right?
Yes.
Okay, did, do you have another question?
Uh, is it just related to, um, his statements?
Yes, you'll get to, uh, ask other questions, uh, but we're asking questions right now of, of, uh, you're the engineer, right, Mr. Corson?
Yes, I am.
Yeah.
And, and does that include setback questions?
Well, why don't you let us have that? What's the question there?
Uh, and so, um, how have they addressed the incremental five feet on the side setbacks required under the zoning ordinance?
I'm not sure if you mean by incremental five foot side offsets.
So, um. In section one ninety-five thirty-two. E two, it says that in R one, you have to add incremental five feet to the side yard setbacks. I don't see that.
My, yeah, my understanding is it's twenty feet. That's the minimum side yard setback for the.
Yeah, there is an adjustment. Mr. Sawyer brought it up last time, and they looked at it and printed it, now I can't find it. Mr. Sawyer, do you have that citation again?
I do. One ninety-five dash thirty-two.
I'm sorry, five?
One nine five. Thirty-two. E. Two, echo two.
Two?
Echo two.
Okay, all right. Let's look at that real quick. I mean, I, I did look at that, if to the list. The book here.
Gary, it's, it's thirty-two. Exactly thirty.
Jim, you muted yourself.
Jim, you're muted. I have it here, E two. R one or two district side setback, twenty feet for one story buildings up to eighteen feet in height. Uh, second story or building component greater than eighteen feet shall be increased by five feet. Uh, both sides are at least two point five feet, so I guess the question is. Mr. Corson, is any of this, I guess, aside, it's both all two stories, right?
It is two stories, correct.
So I guess the, the point is, I mean, on the left side, your good is twenty-eight feet. So even if you add five, it's, uh, limited. Combined five feet across both side yards, or at least two point five. The right side, you're at the twenty point three feet, so that. Uh, potentially, there's a variance there. Yeah, so we can add that if need be. It looks like maybe there is one there required. I'm not sure, looking quickly, and we've never dealt with this, to my knowledge, that, uh. Two point five feet if addition affects one side yard. I don't know whether that should be twenty-five or twenty-two point five. Either way, it's over the twenty point three. Do people understand that?
Yeah, I haven't run across that myself, so I'd, I'd have to.
Yeah, no, we've never had, that, and, um, we've never dealt with that issue. There's, there's a provision that comes up a lot, where if your lot's too wide or too narrow. There's an adjustment to the side setback, but this one, uh. Is based on height, not, not width. It's unusual, so. The, the chairman, do you understand that? I don't know if you have the book there.
No, I don't have the book in front of me.
Okay, but I read it, it says if, uh. Side yard for a set, but second story or any component greater than eighteen feet in height shall be increased. By combined five feet across both side yards. Or at least two point five if an addition affects. I think that says that you need twenty-two point five on each side.
Sounds like it.
So, like, the, the left side is fine, twenty-eight point four. So, right side, twenty point three, you, you need a variance of two point two feet.
Yeah, so we, uh, we would, uh, you know, I would.
I don't have a problem amending, having deemed the application amended to include that.
No, 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 and, you know, the compliance plans that go back in, I'll make sure that that's reflected. I just want to point out that that, um, that condition on the right hand side is being improved drastically. It's currently thirteen point five feet. And we're making it twenty point three feet.
That's a good point.
So I guess that'd be. So they may, it meant it had that variance, if people understand that.
Yeah.
And just to close the loop there, so what's, what is the building height on that side? I guess, Mr. Azrell, maybe you're the one to ask, you're.
Actually, it's, it's on the plan. Let me just share that again. It's, it's in the upper left of the plan, and, um.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, the engineering plan at the moment, but.
Yeah.
If you could share the, just so we can see it.
So it's roughly one oh six point two average on, uh, on the right side, so it's less than thirty-one point seven, because the roof peak is one thirty-six. So it ends up being about twenty-nine point eight feet on the right side.
Okay, and I'm looking at, I guess, sheet Z two, the elevation. There's a right elevation, that's where, what we're talking about.
Yes, so, yeah, the architectural plans will be discussed next.
And actually, I guess the sunroom portion is one story. And actually, I guess the sunroom portion is one story along that side. So.
Right. Anyway.
All right. So, Mr. Sawyer, did you have any other questions?
Um, yeah, it's in between both the engineer and the architect. I was questioning the sunroom being it's, what is its elevation? Because I'm questioning whether the deck needs to be part of the setback because it looks like the sunroom elevation is 106.1 and the ground elevation on that deck is 104. So you're over two feet. So I'm questioning if that should have been part of the setback.
If that's your Mr. Azrael, I guess, maybe.
Um.
Or I don't know who.
I think we have 106. We have 105.63 for the deck elevation. This is on the lock rating plan that we were looking at before. I don't see where it's two feet, to be honest with you.
Okay. Well, I was looking at the Z1 that shows the elevation of the 10613.
Yeah, that'll have to be corrected because the lock rating plan is, is actually the correct grades that are that are going to be built. You can see the first floor is 106.13. You step out right here, a six inch riser down. So it's 105.63. And the lowest elevation you have, it slopes from right to left will be on the left hand side. That's 104. So even there, it's, it's only 1.6 feet. It's not two feet.
You could agree that the elevation would not exceed two feet.
Correct.
Okay. I think that solves it for me.
Hey, Mr. Sawyer, anything else?
And then question on the new fifth bedroom in the basement and the escape access. Is that considered external to the setback?
Window wells are not required to be within the building envelope. So they can be outside the setback line.
And escape, and escape window wells are considered window wells?
I didn't see any, any differentiation. It just addresses window wells in the code.
Given that escapes are window wells. Thank you.
Okay. So let's move to the next witness, please.
We have another hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, who's that?
Claire Whitcomb.
Yes, hi Claire.
Hi, I'm Claire Whitcomb. I'm chair of the Environmental Commission. I just wanted to ask, I'm not sure I'm following the impervious coverage conversation, but if there is an overage with the new design, could the applicant solve that really nicely with a permeable paving on the walkway or some other design feature that, that would take care of the overage?
Well, we, we are actually doing that with the walkway. We're using pavers. So we got a little bit of reduction there. And as I mentioned previously, we're taking a large portion of the driveway adjacent to the house on the left hand side into the dry well system. So normally you would have the dry well just addressing roof runoff. But we've gone one step further and also added a drainage inlet to capture some of the runoff from the driveway as well.
So there's nothing more that could be done just cosmetically to, to take care of the pervious coverage? The impervious coverage overage, right? You still need a variance?
Yeah, a variance is required for 979, 975 square feet. And we're putting into the dry well system about 2,800 and 2,800 square feet. That's what we're putting into the dry well system versus the 975 overage.
I mean, obviously a driveway of better material would be helpful. Maybe you could solve that, but that's, that's not a question. That's a comment. So thank you very much.
Okay. So next witness, please. And we just want to try and move quickly if we can. So please try and be brief.
The next witness is Doug Azrael, the architect.
Yes.
Hi. Okay. I'm gonna share the screen with you. All right. And all right, showing the floor plans on Z1. You know, we've significantly reduced the, the footprint of the proposed house from previously at 2,529 square feet with a garage that extended toward Garfield. Now that garage has been eliminated altogether and is a side entrance at the basement level. As you can see here on the left side of, of the basement. And the, the current proposed coverage for the first floor is 1,963 square feet. The overall mass of the building, which I'll get to with the elevations, has been reduced as well. The total square footage was previously 4,819 square feet. Now it's 3,500, 3,650 square feet. And that's a 1,169 square foot reduction in, in the overall floor area of the proposed building. The, so just a quick walkthrough, we've gone with a scheme where, you know, the client desires a, a master suite at about the first floor level, just above the garage. And then the additional bedrooms on the second floor. We have bedrooms two, three and four at the second floor and then I'll take you to the elevations on sheet Z2. And I'll zoom in on the front elevation. Again, you know, reinforcing that the garage that was once out so far by eliminating it, we've eliminated also a front yard setback requirement. And the overall mass of the building has been reduced. And this is a side view from the, the corner street here from, for the garage entrance. You know, the overall heights come down and you know, this is probably the broadest face of, of the whole composition and it's on the side yard facing the street. Then at the rear. Again, yeah, it's, we brought it in from sides and front to back. And then the right side yard, which has improved from about 13 feet to 20 feet is as you see here. So we go with the contemporary barn style with the board and baton siding and stone accents. Just back to the front again. So, yeah, any questions?
I don't have any questions. Does the board have any questions? No? Okay. We'll go to the public then, I guess. Fran, do we have any hands raised from the public?
Mr. Sawyer.
Okay, Mr. Sawyer, this might be a good time to also, if there's any statements you want to make as well as questions, it might be a good time to just do that.
Okay. Am I unmuted now, Fran?
You're unmuted. Yeah.
Oh, great. Thanks. Okay. Um. All right. Let me ask a couple of questions from the standpoint that last time when the first plan was submitted, which the previous plan was submitted, which was a larger size house. And now it's been reduced from that size to the current proposal. I noticed that while the homeowners had expressed a need for first level living, this new home is a split level with four sets of stairs to get from the garage to now the third floor living area. To include up to the second, looks like a second primary bedroom upstairs. So that appears to be sort of contrary to their expressed desire for a home. And then now that the, the property is listed for sale, I'm wondering if this is now a spec house or or what? My first question.
We'd be happy to answer that question. With our appearance before the board, the last time we realized that our desire to have no stairs at all was not possible with this piece of property. So we considered selling it so that we would not, you know, move with our project. And after careful consideration, we realized that we really want to be in Madison. There is virtually no other houses of similar location and so on available at all. And so we went back to the drawing board and, and we made the compromise of having you know, some stairs, not a full flight that you would have in a typical colonial, but rather this split level of perhaps five steps to come in from the garage to the main level. And then another five steps up to where our bedroom would be. The other features of going up to where the other bedrooms are and so on, are not going to have to be on a regular basis. So we were willing to forfeit, you know, in, in our desire to really build on this particular lot. We like the neighborhood. It's close to our sun in Madison. You know, there, it just isn't a lot of properties available in Madison. You, any of the realtors could probably tell you that. So that was our conclusion. It was, it was a compromise. And it is not a spec house.
I, I think you've answered that. Is there another question, Mr. Sawyer?
Yes. And so more of a, more of a statement from the standpoint that, so this new house requires variances for previous coverage, for building coverage, and it has a significant floor area square footage. And it appears to me that those sizes in this new proposal, while smaller than the previous proposal, much larger than the existing house or within the existing neighborhood, does not fit and is not really fitted to the 1/30 acre property and the existing Southview development. And I don't think it would be an undue hardship if they were to propose a property that didn't require variances from excess, you know, excessive impervious coverage or a building size. And even the, the number of floor area of the building. So I would like to ask the board to ask the plans to be set to, basically to deny these variances and perhaps ask that a plan be put forth that is keeping with the size of the lot and and the R1 zone.
Mr. Sawyer, I'd like our planner to address those issues.
Don't, don't answer. It wasn't clear.
Well, the board will take that under advisement.
Mr. Senator, our planner, Mr. Ritchie, I think is available and he's going to address all of these criteria.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Mr. Sawyer?
Um, yeah, we deserve the right to ask some questions after the planner compares it to other, other large size lots.
That's fine. Are there any other hands raised?
No, there are not.
Okay. So you have a planner?
We do. Paul Ritchie?
Okay, let's hear it. Hear it from him, please. Please be sworn in.
Have you seen me, Mr. Chairman?
Gary's muted.
Mr. Azrael, can you take your shared screen down?
I'm sharing. Yeah. Yep.
Okay, Mr. Ritchie, I'm back. Sorry. Do you sound me for a testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, you're licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
Indeed.
Your license is current?
It is.
Okay.
Guess that's good enough, huh? Okay.
I defer to the chairman. I don't have any questions.
I, I have testified in front of the Madison zoning board and planning boards before and locally in the area. So.
Yeah, we'll accept you as the next person.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um. I, I have a rather detailed outline. I'll, I'll try to be as concise as, as possible. I, I know the hour is getting late, but for the need for, if there's need for any more detail, please let me know. But I did prepare a fairly detailed outline. With that said, do I need to go through the variances that are requested? Talk about the lot in terms of its non-conformities and all like, or can I move right into my testimony?
I think you can do that pretty quickly, probably.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Again, we're in your R1 zone. Your R1 zone is a 25,000 square foot zone. For minimum lot size, it requires a minimum lot width of 125 feet and a depth of 135 feet. The subject property, as you know, is undersized at 15,413 feet. In terms of the variances that we are seeking, to permit a, a building coverage of 12.74%, where 10.52% is existing and 10% is permitted. To permit a maximum impervious coverage of 23.99%, where 22.07% is existing and 20% is permitted. It's just been identified that a side yard setback is required of 22.5 feet, where 20.3 feet is proposed and 13.5 feet exists. I just read that provision and what that provision says is that when the building is, is greater than 18 feet in height, that's what triggers the additional 2.5 foot increase. You got, being that since the other side yard is well over the 20 feet, it's not triggered on that side. I note that the building is already 24 feet in height. So in terms of exacerbating that existing non-conforming, as a result of that provision, that does not occur. Simply stated, the applicant is essentially increasing the, the height of the building by 7.5 feet, but that side yard setback is increasing by 6.8 feet. So proportionally, that side yard relationship is dramatically improving as a result of this application. So the non-conformities of the lot are, it's undersized nature and it has 100 feet of width where 125 feet is required. Regarding the positive criteria, we'll be seeking the variance of the flexible C2 criteria. I look at this property pretty closely in your zone plan as well as your master plan. It, it's my opinion that despite the need for the several variances, including minimum lot size, the applicant is proposing a development that will be consistent and improve the existing character of the area. The elevation shown by your architect show a tastefully designed colonial on the exterior, a split level interior design with side faces, garages that would be an improvement to the neighborhood. And I'm going to show some pictures in a moment, but I think the architect did an excellent job of taking clues from the neighborhood and die, and designing a home that could be harmoniously integrated into it. If I can share my exhibit. Just give me a second. It's had the wrong page up. My vision is not getting any better. I did prepare an exhibit that was, that was submitted to the board. To qualify this quickly, it's entitled Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2. Exhibit 1 is an aerial photograph entitled Aerial Structures and Building Coverage, 69 Garfield Avenue area, Madison Borough, New Jersey. And what this shows is it's prepared in a geographic information system where the latest aerial photography is 2015. And I just took a scatter of, of lots in the existing zone in blue. I show the subject property in yellow and using the Morris County Geographic Information Foot footprint data, I, I approximate the building square footages in the area. And I'll, I'll talk about this more in the negative criteria, but.
I don't, I don't think your screen sharing is working. At least we can't see it. Can the board see it?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry. No one stopped me. Okay, I'm sorry. No one stopped me.
Yeah.
There you go. Okay.
Okay, so to briefly recap, I show um the subject property in yellow. I show some surrounding properties in blue, which I I did an analysis on. Uh, and I used uh Morris County footprint data because there's no perfect data, survey data of your entire neighborhood that exists that estimate the the building footprints uh in the area. And then following, I'll I'll go through this. Like, I have some pictures of the area, the subject property being picture number one. Uh, it's going to be my opinion that, you know, the subject property is the one that's really out of character with the area and that the improvements will bring it more into character uh with the area. Um, but I'm going to go through um as I go through my 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 negative criteria um a little bit more detail, but I I just wanted to point out that um that I the properties that I do show there in blue, there there are 32 properties. Um, um, 23 out of the 32 properties are are undersized in this area. In our case, the the subject lot is approximately 38% smaller than the required size for the district. And I note that since adjoining lots are undersized, that there aren't opportunities to increase the size of the of the subject property. Um, given the characteristics of this lot, it's my opinion that the subject property more neatly fits into the requirements of the R2 district, which anticipates lots that are 15,000 square feet and larger. Regarding the requirements of the R2 district, the subject property would adhere to all the requirements except the proposed building coverage, which is 0.24% over. And now the side yard that is um the the 2.2 foot efficiency also would be uh triggered. Um, and again, I note that this is was in indicated by Mr. Corzen that we are improving existing non-conforming conditions on the property. The existing front yard setback of 39 feet is being improved to 50.3 feet. And again, the side yard setback, um right side yard setback of 13.5 feet is being increased to 20 feet. Um. In my opinion, uh, since the zoning requirements for the area are not consistent with the existing conditions of the neighborhood today, applying standards more suited for an undersized lot results in a better zoning alternative in this context. And I'm going to again discuss this more when I when I talk about the negative criteria. Um, and again, here, the only increase or exacerbation to a pre-existing non-conforming condition relates to the impervious coverage uh in the building coverage, which I previously opined are appropriate for an undersized lot. Uh, I note that your this uh development advances uh many master plan goals originally in 2011, continues to preserve the integrity of existing residential areas by preventing intrusion of non-residential uses into residential neighborhoods and by maintaining existing development intensity and population density consistent with residential neighborhood patterns. And I'm going to discuss that more in a moment. Your 2020 master plan uh recognizes the need to pay attention to adjacent impacts to adjacent properties. And here, the applicant traditionally with your master plan was opining that when new infill development occurs, it trip traditionally the relationship to adjoining properties uh decreases here in terms of the side yards. They're all shrinking as a result of this development, so uh sensitivity has been given to the neighboring property owners. Um, and I note that um again, as I note, while the height's increasing by 7.5 feet, is that setback is increasing by 6.8 feet. Uh, and this is my opinion that that increased setback more than mitigates the side yard setback deficiency. And the master plan, when your 2020 master plan also recognizes the challenges for development on undersized lots. And that's clearly the case here when you're trying to, when the standards were meant for a 25,000 square foot lot. And that's and we have a lot that's 38% smaller than that. For these reasons, it's my opinion, the subject application meets the following purpose of the Missland use law, provide adequate light air and open space, setbacks are being improved here to improve us, to provide sufficient space for residential uses to meet the needs for New Jersey citizens uh here by allowing the construction of a house that's also consistent with the neighborhood and to promote desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Again, we're placing a a structure um that uh is, in my opinion, detracting from the neighborhood, whereas we're providing for uh a custom-designed uh single-family home. Regarding the negative criteria, the granting of the requested variances would not result in substantial detriment to the public good or zone plan. In every instance, except for reasonable impervious and building coverage increases, the applicant is maintaining or improving existing conditions. And while impervious coverage information is not available for all properties in the area, I provided information from Morris County Geographic Information System pertaining to the size of building footprints. It's not as accurate as a as a property survey for, but for planning purposes is the best information available to attempt to quantify conditions within um within the neighborhood. And here, I I prepared this information in a graphic form so the board could more easily, in my opinion, realize this information than rather than speaking out block and lots. And 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 quickly, I'll note that based on Exhibit One, there are 32 properties. Um, out of those 32 properties, 29 or over 90% have building coverages over 10% in the R1 district. The average building coverage was 12.45% and the building coverages range from approximately 8 to 16.2%. And in 15 out of those 32 properties would have greater building coverages than the proposed home. So that clearly states to me in my findings as a planner that this is a house that's essentially the average for the area and there's many that are larger to some that are smaller, but it's it's consistent with the character of the area. Um, again, here, while small increases in impervious and building coverage are proposed, these improvements will be located outside of the required setbacks, understanding that that side yard setback's being improved and proposed be located to the rear of the site within the permitted rear yard setback that largely, I don't believe, will be visible from the public right away. It will not result in negatively changing or creating the appearance of less open space on the lot. An increased stormwater, as we heard um from the site engineer, will be more than uh collected within the proposed drivewells, which will result in stormwater improvement for the property in the neighborhood as a whole. Um, also, the applicant is proposing roof lines and an architectural style that would upgrade rather than track from the neighborhood. So in this context, this application represents a better zoning alternative for the tract, the neighborhood, and the benefits associated with the deviations outweigh the disturbance. It's my, I opine that it results in sound land use planning for the reasons that I mentioned and the granting of the proposed variances are justified. Uh, I hope I didn't move too quickly there. I know um it's kind of late in the evening. Um, I do want to show some pictures also, just to place it on perspective. Uh, Picture One is of the subject property. You know, your 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 1970s ish split level directly across the street is Picture Two. Uh, Colonial, the property to the right uh is in Picture Number Three. Property to the left uh is Picture Number Four, so a colonial nature uh in the area. Um, Picture Five is across the street, just down the road. These block and lots correspond uh with the arrow. I can show that in greater detail. That lot was recently subdivided. You can see the roof lines being proposed by the applicant are consistent with that. Um, and then um picture number six is also taken across the street, uh a few houses down the road. Uh, Picture Number Seven uh shows uh a house around the corner on Candlewood Drive. And and Picture Number Eight is also uh on Garfield Avenue. So you can see there's a is a mix of homes and architectural styles. Largely, uh, you find the there being a consistent colonial three theme uh in the area, clearly not a cookie cutter community, attractive neighborhood. Um, and um I think it's clear that this application would provide a home that's more in keeping in character with this area as well. Um, that that can that concludes my testimony.
Okay, is there uh any questions from the board? Okay, with that, let's go to the public. Any questions from the public or statements? I can't see. Uh, you're muted, Fran.
Ms. Whitcomb?
Okay, Ms. Whitcomb?
Yeah, I I don't see the unmute button.
You, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, I think it's wonderful that this house is better than the previous house and but I also want to just point out for the board's consideration that um an argument about what is good design and what's appropriate for Madison really should reflect the master plan. And um the master plan's goals include making Madison a model for energy efficiency, sustainability, and resiliency and reducing the Bart borough's environmental footprint and carbon emissions. And it also calls for using sustainable design and green building practices where variances are being considered for building or impervious coverage. So I I would just like to raise the bar on um sort of our vision for what 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 Madison should look like in the future. Thank you very much.
Any other pants raised?
Mr. Sawyer?
All right, am I back on, Fran?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I would just uh like to point out that a number of the uh pictures and uh comparisons provided by their planner uh were for uh houses not within the existing Southview development. And some of the properties that he used for comparisons were three times the size of the existing lot. And so I'm not sure that that is an appropriate uh comparison that because of uh another lot down the street is three times the size and has a colonial, I'm not sure that the board ought to use that as a basis to decide that one of the um close to a dozen split levels um of a more reasonable size in the development should be um should be granted variances for this size. Thank you.
Uh, does the applicant want to respond to that at all?
Well, I think the planner's addressed it unless he'd like to do it again.
Uh, Mr. Novak, I can address it. Just um, Mr. Chairman, uh, picture number two is taken directly across the street. Picture number three is taken, it's the property that borders the subject property to the right. Picture number four borders the subject property to the left. So in the first page, these are all immediately surrounding properties. Um, picture number five, I'll show you straight down the street, but picture number seven is just around the corner that adjoins the.
I think, yeah, I think.
You can see the brown house, which um of the subject property where I'm circling it uh with my with my.
I'm sorry, screen sharing is not working again.
I'm sorry.
But I I think you've answered their questions anyway.
I I think so as well. Okay, uh, Mr. Sawyer, was that it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, there was nobody else in the public, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, we don't, we haven't discussed any conditions or no additional conditions other than the possibility of, I think we do need the side yard variance figure, Gary? You're muted. Can't hear you, Gary.
Yes, that would be a condition. The um but they also agreed that any that the deck would not exceed an elevation of two feet because that does trigger setbacks.
Okay.
I think that was the only condition, really, and we did add a variance, a technical side setback variance, uh 2.5 feet required. I think that was, I don't think there are any changes otherwise.
Okay, so then I want to move to deliberation. So I don't know, how about uh Tim? You're at the top of my screen. Why don't you go first?
I um, look, I I I'm really grateful for the uh the applicant going back and um and thinking critically about this. Um, I think the plan is, well, first off, um, you know, look, what's there uh clearly is is inconsistent with the style of the neighborhood um and is not going to attract uh, you know, a lot of uh uh a lot of interest in the lot or the uh or the neighborhood. Uh, I'm sure that also that by building something new, you have the opportunity to build something that's much more efficient than what exists there. So from an environmental perspective, that's a positive. Um, and I think what you're asking for in terms of uh i- in terms of um the the few variances is much more modest than it was previously. Um, so all of that is to say that I'm I'm supportive of this application uh as it stands, obviously, with the with the additional uh variance added to it. But um I I would be supportive of this.
Thank you, Roger.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, I I do think it's a very attractive design. Um, to make the split level look like a Victorian farmhouse, uh, just it's it's quite a feat. Um, certainly, a property could be built uh within with no variances, but um that's what the board is for, to look at applications, decide on variances. I um, you know, certainly, it's 10,000 square feet under the R1 zone. It's it is by an R1 standard, very, very undersized. Like, I think the application as presented is fairly minimal as far as the um the amount of variances we're asking for. I think they've really gone a long way trying to recharge water into the ground from from this property. And I I think they've done a good job of um presenting the application. I'd be in favor of it.
Anthony?
Yes, so um I just to add a little bit to that, um, I I appreciated the testimony um by Mr. Sawyer and also by Mr. Ritchie. Um, you know, I think it's that area and, you know, whatever that that development is when it was developed is probably more appropriately zoned in R2. Um, and I appreciated the testimony that, you know, if it was zoned for R2, the only variance that would be needed was the principal building coverage for something, you know, minimal 0.25%. Um, so so, you know, taking that into account, I think that um it makes sense and I think that the capturing all of the stormwater is going to be a huge improvement, so I'm in favor.
Thank you. Mary Sue?
Yeah, nothing further to add. I mean, I think the applicant, the applicant and and their and his professionals did an excellent job taking the feedback of the board and incorporating it. They eliminated the need for the setback uh variances, two of them. They made all these improvements around stormwater management. Um, I'm just really blown away. I think they hit it out of the the ballpark for me. Um, so I have uh nothing further to add, but I'm in favor of the application now. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen?
I think um other folks pretty much covered it. Um, I have a kind of philosophical question, but I don't know. I mean, at um what Claire Whitcomb asked uh and and the statement that she made um raises a question for me. At what point are are we in a position to um require greener construction and um more environmentally focused construction? Um, we, do we have an ordinance, any ordinances to support it?
Mr. Chairman, if I might opine on, I I do not believe there are any ordinances on the books in the borough as far as building construction. Um, we are, we do have new stormwater management ordinances and the applicant um in in capturing additional stormwater runoff, including the driveway, I think is exceeding um what the ordinance now requires. We would like to see some focus or some attempt at green infrastructure, um green, green methodologies for for addressing stormwater. Um, but it is um permissive. It is not a requirement.
And I think also we 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 also need to bear in mind, we need to be reasonable as well.
Well, uh, I appreciate uh the enormous effort that went into uh producing this new plan. And um not not that it matters particularly, but I think it's a better looking building. Um, so um based on everything on board, thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Agree with the others. I think that uh I applaud the applicants for being as responsive as they have been. I think that it results in a good plan. Uh, the overages are. I applaud the applicants for being as responsive as they have been. I think it results in a good plan. The overages are very minor, especially with the size of the lot. I do like the fact that relative to the first design, we've got substantially more yard in the back to absorb any stormwater. It's something like 1,200 additional square feet of natural absorption. So I think to a certain extent, we've added some green element to it. One question I would have, and this is really for you, Joe and Gary, in the past where people have been removing trees, have we included a condition that they make sure to comply with this tree ordinance? I can't remember.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we need to.
Well, they have to comply with all ordinances now.
If I could help, we, we made an application for a tree removal permit, which was granted. I think we're removing five trees and we're required to plant three. We've already received that.
Yeah, on occasion, the board has focused on one particular tree as a point of emphasis. Usually, I think what has happened is one where the board encouraged the applicant to try to save the tree. Rather than, you know, I think that's the situation where the board has sometimes dealt with trees, but as a general matter, no, I mean, to the extent that there's an ordinance and it applies, they have to comply.
We, I know that
The board doesn't mention it, doesn't give them an exemption.
Yeah, there are four
One, what about the other five things you didn't mention? So there are different
Beautiful maple trees at the curb line which are being preserved. The rest of the foliage
We're in deliberation, Mr. Novak. So Jim, did you have anything further?
No, I approve of it.
Okay, I'm in support of the application as well. I think it's a great, I think it's a great design. I think it respects the setbacks. There's many positives here. Everybody said that I'm not going to go through them again, but I think it's a a significant change from what we had, but more importantly, I think it fits the lot. So I'm in favor of it with the conditions. So can we get a vote with the conditions that Mr. Hall mentioned?
And just before that, did anybody miss the January meeting? I can't remember at this point. If you did, you're not eligible.
Yes, Ms. Dreskow, but she's not here this evening either, so.
That's fine. Nice one. Double check because it's two months ago now.
Excuse me, I just need to mention to the Novaks that with this new variance, there is a fee of $150 that needs to be paid to the borough.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so a motion, do we have a motion to approve with the conditions? Who said that?
I did.
So Jim, and I think we have Helen.
Thank you.
Call.
Mr. Dianio?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Salco?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes. Okay, congratulations. Your application is approved.
Thank you.
A lot of luck. Thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna take a five minute break and then we're gonna hop onto the next application. So mute everything and your mic and video. Thank you. Five minutes.
As soon as which then discharge into the detention system. The only difference is now that it's all underground. We've enhanced some landscaping along the rear of the property along the south side. We're proposing 20 foot high arbivites along that area. We're providing screening along the easterly side on top of the proposed retaining wall. We've also added more area for parking spaces for the affordable units to the end of the site. We have four proposed parking spaces there. Each dwelling unit will have a two car driveway and a two car garage. So we are exceeding the required parking requirements where 14 parking spaces are proposed and we're proposing 20 parking spaces. That summarizes the changes we've made. We also reviewed the letters from Mr. Russell Stern and Mr. Harrington. We have no comments or issues with Mr. Stern's letter. We're in agreement with all his items. In respect to the engineer's letter, there's a couple small items which I think we can address. But the majority of those items, we agree with.
Great, thank you Frank. Mr. Chairman, if the board members have any questions for Mr. Maserato?
Are you going to be going through Mr. Stern's letter point by point? Because I know there were a whole bunch of different details he went over.
We weren't planning on it, Mr. Foster. We've actually spoken to Mr. Stern in depth. And as Mr. Matarazzo just indicated, we are stipulating that we will be able to meet each and every one of the conditions in his revised letter of February 28th.
Mr. Harrington, were there any particular items that?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Matarazzo, you just mentioned there were a couple of items that would need to be discussed on my memorandum.
Yeah, item number 15. Should the board act favorably on this application, I would recommend that all of the site work be bonded and inspected, inspection fees posted. I think that that should be really just for the site work within the right of way, not on the private property itself.
I concur with that, Mr. Matarazzo. That's the relatively new provision in the municipal land use law. I believe that was Mr. Russo's concern that the bond, that the improvements, all of the site improvements be included in the calculation of the engineering inspection escrow as well. Which is important in keeping with the current law. But I concur, I think we are in agreement with each other on that.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
Yeah, item number eight refers to the use of the existing sanitary sewer lateral. The size and condition of the existing service should be investigated to ensure it is appropriately sized to accommodate the additional flows and to ensure it is watertight all the way to the sanitary. The applicant had actually excavated up the location of that sanitary sewer lateral and inspected it himself and states that it's in very good condition. So our intention is to use that existing sanitary sewer lateral.
That's interesting. We'd really like to see, we need to see confirmation of that from a sanitary sewer inspection service. Notwithstanding the representations from the applicant, but we need to ensure that that sanitary sewer lateral is indeed intact and watertight and is a good connection to the municipal system, so they don't have problems down the road.
Okay.
So do you agree to do that?
Yes.
We do. Okay, next.
The other item is item number seven. I would recommend a survey monument be provided at the northeast corner of the site along Elm Street. I don't know what the need would be for the survey monument. We're not giving up any right of way as part of this application. It would just be an existing property corner.
It was a recommendation. I think I could be flexible on that.
Okay. We have no problem installing just a regular iron bar with a cap on it as a property corner.
That's agreed.
Okay.
Anything else?
Mr. Matarazzo, there were two newer comments on on my memorandum with regard to the location of the common mailbox. Its proximity to Elm Street with the mail delivery being made might leave it, you know, as part of a conflict to entering vehicles. I'd just like to see if we can move that somewhere else on the site to eliminate the potential conflicts with entering and
That's fine.
It's a tweak to the site plan, Mr. Chairman. But also, Mr. Matarazzo, I think we could perhaps adjust the stormwater collection system at the bottom of the where it ties into the detention system. You have the stormwater manufactured treatment device in the middle of the entrance drive at that point. And when it needs to be vacuumed out, needs to be serviced, that would block the entire entrance drive. So I'd like to work with you on revising the layout of the stormwater collection system.
Agreed. I see that issue. Move it to the side or somewhere. Just get it out in the middle of the road.
That's really all I had at this point, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Stern?
Mr. Chair, yes. Yes, I was silent before because I fell off my chair. I think this is the first time that an applicant has agreed to absolutely everything in the report. So that's a good sign. And the reduction of units is very positive to this application. If you recall, I think I phrased it at the last meeting that it was missing any, it was missing elbow room. It was very, very tight. And they've really improved the space around the building where it counted the most and the elimination of that almost that crater almost was, is extremely positive in this application. The, and also by eliminating those two parking spaces, it makes for much safer development. And I think the landscaping now could be further enhanced. Maybe that mailbox goes in that location along, you know, I think that could be a nice area, nice little area now. Just one question for a little bit of clarity. What is the proposal for the fence? Now, there's a six foot high fence that's depicted along the side and rear of the property. The thought was six foot high fence stops when it gets to the face of the building. And along the, that would be the easterly property line. Once you hit the face of the building, it would then drop to a four foot segment along the retaining wall. So that was my idea. On the westerly side, the thought was when you get across from the building or actually from that parallel, that parking space in front of the building, you end it. It's a tough call to make on that side because what's not depicted on the drawings is the location of the existing driveway and parking area associated with the single family home. So I think that just, that fence location needs to be detailed out a little more. Can have any thoughts on that?
If I may, Russell, at the last meeting, you had also recommended that it would probably be in this situation, a better idea to request the variance for the height of the fence. We definitely concur with that. The applicant can better address what's on the other side since he's aware. If I can let him just interject on that one answer for you. You're still under oath, Mr. D. Simone.
So Russell, and I realized that we missed that comment in your letter and it wasn't properly addressed at this time. But just to try to address the comment the best I can tonight, I went out there today with a tape measure and measured the driveway at being 65 feet away from my property corner over there. So I believe there's ample room to run the six foot fence around, as you said, and then step it down to four feet. And I don't think it's a conflict with their driveway or their parking situation. And we will definitely accurately depict that on our eyes drawings that we will resubmit.
Okay, I think once, once that's depicted, I think the determination could be made because you really don't want the front yard area consumed with fencing.
I agree.
Boards, the codes clearly don't encourage that.
Okay.
Okay, okay. And for the board's information, there are waivers required for the fencing, for the height of the fencing and the amount of openness within the fencing.
Okay, so when would that get worked out? That could be worked out?
Be, in my opinion, that could be a condition of approval.
Well, we have to define a fence variance. We can't leave that up in the air really.
Well, it's defined, it's defined in the, in my report. I think it's pretty clear on the easterly side that the four foot fence, the fencing would end at the end of the retaining wall.
Yes.
Yeah, and on that, the, this has come up before, but I think the ordinance says if you have a fence on top of a wall, you combine the two to get your height. You can't have a six foot fence on top of a two foot wall. Is that an issue here?
I believe that would be an issue here. The fence was set back roughly four feet from the wall, five feet from
I don't have that in front of me. I don't know if that to be exactly on top or what. But anyway, so the, well, let's talk about the wall. Is there, one of these plans had the wall height, didn't it? Top and bottom of wall.
Yeah, it's on our grading plan.
What sheet is that?
Four.
A sheet four.
Okay.
Is it, is it accurate to say that the wall height is generally four feet?
Yes, the maximum, the maximum wall height we have is four feet.
Right, okay. At least along the, at least along the easterly elevation, you're screening what's an old garage for the nursing home and also a trailer that's there, a storage trailer that's there. So there's a benefit to the, to the screening, to the future residents and the public that would see the back of that building.
No, but okay, but anyway, a six foot wall and the fence, I mean, the six foot fence would be from the front corner of the building all the way around to the back.
Correct.
Okay, because along the the six foot allowance doesn't pick up to the back of the building. So front to back, it's four feet. That's
You could only go six feet when you go past the rear of the building.
Right, the rear building line it says, and this is angled. I don't know how that works, but I guess on that side, I'd do it there, but as you're saying, have a six foot fence to the front of the building, four feet in front. Now, the four feet in front, would that be open, semi-open? I think that's an issue too.
What we're proposing is the same, the same type of fence, a solid PVC fence.
So that's probably, I'm looking for the
It has to be 50% open.
Yeah, 50% open. And I think that's, in the, in the particular fence that we're proposing in that collection, they do make the matching four foot fence in a 50% open fence. I think we'd be able to accommodate it so it all matches and is cohesive.
It'll be four foot closed.
No, four foot, 50% open, Gary.
Okay. And that's from the front, the back six foot and to the extent that the wall creates a variance, well, it's a variance anyway to be there. And we'll figure out what the wall is if required. And what did we say the wall was along there? Two feet, four feet?
Four feet. The highest is at four feet. And it's a waiver.
And then along the back, I call it the back, that'll be all six feet. That'll be okay. Does it continue around back there?
Yes, it does.
And then the next side, the what is that, the west side? What would you have there? Part of the building again?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, so that's the same six feet instead of four feet. Six feet instead of four feet. And then does it? Is there any fence along that front piece? I think you mentioned. Is that what we were concerned about the neighbor's driveway, Russell?
Yeah, correct.
And what will we have there? We don't know or.
We they just need to provide that additional information, whether or not any four foot open fence would be provided. It starts.
Semi-open.
Yeah, 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 it'll be semi-open if anything.
Well, we can give a variance for that, and if they don't do it, they don't have to do it.
Okay. Okay.
Is that agreeable?
Yeah, that's a great.
You can always do less.
No, of course.
Okay, yeah, so that that's fine. I just want to nail that down and fortunately I have to try to nail it down so we can have a resolution and not. Waste another month. Okay.
Okay, so that really covers it for me. Really, the 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 open items in my report. Pertain to the to the variances and waivers.
Is there any questions from the board?
Russ, I just have a clarification. The if I read your earlier memo correctly. You were you were looking at the application at that point needing. Something on the order of nineteen or twenty waivers or variances. Based on your more recent memo of February twenty eighth. It looked to me as though four of those had been taken care of, which left us with. Fifteen or sixteen waivers or variances that would still be needed. It sounds as though one of those, the fence height. Has been resolved based on tonight's discussion. Is is that correct in terms of of what remains to be done in terms of variances and and waivers?
Yeah.
If I counted correctly, in other words.
Exactly. I I didn't count them all up, but there are quite a number with the revision, the intensity of those. A lot of those have been reduced. Some of those pertain to. Factors that would be difficult to remedy, but now deserve a question of the applicant. Has the applicant sought to obtain additional property? Adjoining property and to that I would say pine acres.
Russell, I. I I have approached them and there is no desire for pine acres to sell any additional property.
Okay, because some of the variances relate to lot width, lot depth, and lot area. And that's a pre-existing condition.
And we're relatively locked in. Our site is isolated in terms of obtaining new new land.
And, Russell, I take it the the only real significant variance is the density? Is that the biggie?
To me, that was the biggie and, you know, in the in the board's evaluation, it's. D five density variance is typically you you take a look at the the property, the special reasons. And is it particularly suited for for the proposed development? But in a D five variance, you have a situation where the use is permitted. This semi-attached housing is a permitted use. It's all about the density. And what what we planners look at it is, you know. Can the problems associated with a higher density than permitted be accommodated safely within the property? I could I could tell you. At the prior application, to me, the the answer was pretty much, no, it was not able. It could not be accommodated in that site. It was too tight. It was undesirable, the visual environment. There was little room, the the parking, even though it satisfied RSIS. Was just very, very awkward. There were no garages. You know, we have a different situation now, but I'm sure Mr. Steck will be. Addressing all these variances in a very concise manner to the board's satisfaction.
Yeah, I I think I mentioned at the last meeting that. At least I was when we looked at the. Elm Street one and two, call it Angelica one and two, that. I was comfortable with the density there. And I was looking for something very similar, and I think that's what they've done.
Right, Joe, you're absolutely right. This is just, you know, a very small amount over. But on the other hand, this is providing an affordable housing unit.
Yeah, and I know that.
The other one did not. The others did not.
Yeah, and I made sure when I looked at this, I did, when I when I viewed the property here. I did drive in. To Angelica one and two and like pull onto a driveway or two and, you know, go in and out, navigate. And I didn't get the sense that it was. Overbuilt, so to speak, you know, that it was too intense, but it was. I was good with that, so I didn't feel like we made a mistake, put it that way.
That's that's good.
Okay, so. If there's no other questions, well, is there any other questions? Because then I have to go to the public. Fran, are there any hands raised? This would be to ask Mr. Mararazzo questions. Fran, you renewed. I can't hear you.
This Whitcomb. Hi, it's me again, Claire Whitcomb. I just have a question as to whether any of the environmental commission's points were. Addressed by the applicant in regards to energy efficiency, insulation, solar roof color. EB charging conduit bike racks. So I'm not going to read through the letter. I just wonder if that that has been addressed or will be mentioned in the in the hearing.
Yes, it will be mentioned. When Mr. D Simone speaks, he's gonna hopefully. Provide you some information that'll make you happy about several of the environmental friendly. Things that he's doing on the site, including electric car chargers, etc. So yes, he will testify to that after the planner testifies.
Excellent. Thank you kindly.
Are there any other hands raised?
No, there are not.
Okay, next witness, please.
Yes, thank you. At this time, we'd like to call Mr. Steck, and he did not testify last time, so he needs to be sworn in.
Okay, I need to see him. I can't see him. Maybe get rid of the shared screen for a minute.
Frank, can you close out your shared screen? Here we go.
Oh, there he is. Mr. Steck, your solemnly sworn testimony about to give will be the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Steck, just real quickly for the formality of it. Can you give the board a little bit of your background as a planner?
Yes, but we have education. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and a master's in city and regional planning. I I was licensed in New Jersey in nineteen seventy six and still hold that license. I've testified in about a hundred and fifty municipalities in New Jersey and in Superior Court.
And he's been before us, so we'll accept him.
Okay, thank you so much. Peter, obviously, your license is still valid as of this evening.
It is as of ten o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
It's ten thirty now.
Okay, well, actually till eleven vaporizes.
So, Peter, if you can rather concisely, can you kind of sum up as a planner? Your opinion as to the D five density variance and the several bulk variance relief that the applicant is seeking tonight?
Yes, I'll just. Lay a little foundation as quickly as I can. This property is an assembly of of two lots. Actually, back in the nineteen twenties, there was a single family house on the property, but it's been vacant for a long time. And it's just short of of a half acre. And there are very small areas on the property in the front and in the very rear that exceed fifteen percent in slope. You're now aware of the details of the application. The one latest change is we've removed. The two guest parking spaces that came off the driveway upon entrance. So that obviously is an aesthetic improvement, and it brings the impervious coverage. Probably down to something like fifty one percent. So it's close, but we still, I think, need a variance that exceeds the impervious coverage. The surrounding area is significant. First of all, as you face the property. From the street to the right is a single family house that we've been talking about. That's in a R three zone that doesn't permit townhouses. So in my judgment, it's impractical. It doesn't make any planning sense to try to acquire property from that person. Because we would be triggering a D variance. In order for this property to meet the minimum lot size, we would need another acre of land. And if you, for some reason, took an acre from the nursing home property. That would lose its status as a one of the conditions of the conditional use. So acquiring property to make our lot conforming would trigger a D variance. For the nursing home property. So my and and because already indicated, the nursing home is unwilling to. Sell any of its property and it it makes sense. It uses much of that area adjacent to us for accessory building, parking. And apparently there is a a storage area there. This area is while while we do about a single family home across the street, you know, that there are multifamily garden gardens, garden apartments plus two family dwellings. Part of my analysis was to examine your master plan. It it certainly endorsed the current zoning. Among the goals were supporting a variety of housing types. I note parenthetically that in the. In your Mount Laurel settlement proceedings. This property was referenced when there was an examination of the real realistic development potential. And this property was indicated to potentially provide a one Mount Laurel unit. Now, that was on a density in the evaluation of ten units per acre. This is a half acre, so would be. At least in the eyes of that settlement. It would produce one Mount Laurel unit and of a total of five units on the property. The the central variance that we're looking at here. Is the is the D five variance and as indicated by Mr. Stern, this is not a Medici case. So we don't have the enhanced quality of proof of the negative criteria. And we don't have to show particular suitability of the property. We have to address the additional density and can the problems that might arise from that be be addressed? The way I look at this is that it is driven to a fair degree by the 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 Mount Laurel unit. Clearly, the production of low and moderate income housing is is a public purpose. It doesn't necessarily make the whole project inherently beneficial, but it is obviously a driving force. That was anticipated when the municipality negotiated its its fair share housing responsibilities. The way I look at this is, under the current zoning, someone owning this property would have the right to build two dwelling units. And so the bonus that's being provided here by this application. Is to produce three additional market rate units. That would generate the subsidy to produce one Mount Laurel unit. Now, that's a pretty high ratio, you know, one out of three market rate units to produce one Mount Laurel unit. But again, this fits within this application was filed when the standard was fifteen percent. This is sixteen point six seven percent. So it clearly is is the right ratio to generate a low and moderate income unit. The other important aspect I'd want to suggest is that. If you apply the R five setback standards to this lot, and again, we're supposed to be sixty five thousand square feet. We're only a half acre, and in my opinion, it is impractical and. To expand the square footage. But if you pull back forty feet from the side yacht lines and the rear and sixty feet from the front. You have only eleven percent of the lot that you can build a building on. And the the maximum building coverage is twenty five percent. So automatically, because of the size of this property. You're less than half of the building area, and that, in my opinion, drives the need for setback. Setback relief. So. In terms of density, I think there are. It is a D variance, and that's why this board has jurisdiction. But I believe that there are several purposes of the municipal land use law that are advanced. I would say purpose A is advanced, promoting the general welfare predominantly because we are producing a a Mount Laurel unit. We, in my opinion, this is an appropriate density in this area. Given the fact that we abut a nursing home use, so we're not part of a larger neighborhood. And the other abutting property is in a completely different zone. One of the purposes G is to encourage, provide sufficient space in an appropriate location. Again, this is across the street from multifamily. It abuts nursing home use. The environment is is not purely classic residential here. Purpose M talks about more efficient use of land. This is a good location, especially now that the property, the development has been resized. So now we have a green front lawn, etc., etc. There are a number of dimensional variances that are associated with this, and I'll try to address them as quickly as possible. There was an issue of not having. Indents of at least four feet on the facade of of the townhouses. Again, we are constrained because the setbacks are so onerous with a lot of this size. But in my judgment, if you look at the style of the architecture, there clearly is a distinction between. The the different uses that are there, excuse me, the different units that are there. And so this is not a a just bland facade. I think there was rather handsome architecture. And it accomplishes the purpose of of distinguishing units. This property can also be looked at as a transitional area. Again, I think we positioned the building correctly because it's further away from the R three zone. Where we're offending the setbacks is toward the nursing home, which is clearly an insensitive use. From from these townhouses that are that are being closed. We have setback issues to be left as you're facing the property or to the east. There's a setback of the building of seventeen point five instead of forty. To the decks eleven point five instead of forty. It certainly is wise to shift the buildings away from the more sensitive, single family R three zone. And again, the nursing home is is really, in my opinion, insensitive to that encroachment. The same applies in the rear. We have now area to landscape. We've shifted the retaining wall. And again, that's an insensitive use to this. Again, the lot is substandard in square footage, in width and in depth. And it is, in my opinion, impractical to try to change any of those kinds of dimensions. There is. One of the issues before was the fact we had parking in the front. Those two spaces are now removed. And again, that has reduced the impervious coverage. We were fifty two point seven one percent. I would estimate we probably. Lost maybe four hundred square feet in terms of. The impervious coverage, we're we're probably not below fifty percent now, but we've come very, very close to it. And clearly, the additional runoff can be handled by the stormwater issues here. I'll note that. In the. This zone, in addition to townhouses and multifamily, it does allow a single family use. And it does allow, in at least in the zoning schedule, two family homes on some seven thousand some odd square feet. If you figure out the density of two family homes, and again, you can't fit them in here because this is an irregular. If you figure out the density of two family homes, and again, you can't fit them in here because this is an irregularly shaped property. You would come up with a density of about 12 units an acre. Just looking at the minimum lot size of, I think it was 7,250 square feet. That it does functionally bring the density up, but in this case. Again, the motivating factor is the production of, of a low and moderate income housing unit. In my opinion, that's an important public purpose. And it does drive the density here and the applicant, as you can see from the change from the prior plan to this one. Has substantially lessened the intensity of the development. So I think that the negative criteria are satisfied in several ways. Again, when the municipality was evaluating its realistic development potential under Mount Laurel. This site was looked at as producing one unit and that was at a density of 10 units per acre. We have an insensitive land use on two sides of the property, which is the nursing home. And that's where the, again, the buildings are kind of pushed toward that area. I think the architecture goes a long way in satisfying the negative criteria, it's a handsome looking building. It functionally has enough parking, we are not providing garage parking for the end units. Furthest to the south or rear of the property, but again, that is, is suggested by your planner. And a typical instance to try to make it more economic to have a, a low and moderate income unit. So, because the engineering concerns, I believe have been satisfied. I think the removal of the two units has done a lot to make this a, a, a. Project that I think will finally put something on this property in an area that's in a transition area. And an area that accomplishes the public purpose of producing a low and moderate income unit. It is more than the density of, technically it's 2.48, so what's. Somewhat a strain here is that. You could put two houses on this property, but even though a townhouse design is typically more dense. This zone doesn't allow you to put more density on it, even though that's typically what happens with townhouses. But the important issue in my mind, back to the beginning, is we're getting a bonus of. Three additional market rate units to produce one Mount Laurel unit. That's, in my opinion, a substantial effort or a burden on the developer. And that the compensation is a total number of six units on the property in this design. We apparently will, we may need a fence height variance. But the applicant has indicated that they will have a 50% open fence in front of the property. And if any adjustments are needed to accommodate the adjacent residential home. The applicant is certainly willing to do that. So, like, back to the beginning, I think there are several purposes of the municipal land use law, purpose A. I'll talk about E, talking about appropriate density. G talks about sufficient space in an appropriate location and M talks about more efficient use of land. Again, I repeat, we don't have to show particular suitability because it's a permitted use. We don't have to meet the negative criteria under the enhanced burden of proof, but I think with the changes that have made, we do in fact. Have met the, the negative standard, which means this application can be approved without substantial detriment to the public good. And without substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance.
Peter, I have a question for you, you've covered a lot of ground that I may have missed it, could you just address the number of stories?
Oh, yes, I did miss that.
And, and slopes, but they're very minor amount of steep slopes on the.
Right, the, the steep slopes are confined to the very front and the back. And again, because of the engineering work, there's not an issue of erosion that's going to result from that, we have retaining walls. One of the variances that we need is this. Development has a maximum height of two and a half stories and we have three stories. The answer is, this is, in my opinion, a response to try to confine. The buildings as much as possible to the interior of the lot. Again, if you extract the setbacks, we can put, we can build a building that's maybe only 23. And a fraction foot, feet wide, it's almost confiscatory to apply the 40 foot setbacks on either side. The result of this is that we have, you know, smaller footprints, but we've gone up taller to have. Units that are, I think, more adaptable to, 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 to modern living. The best example is, I, you know, the prior project that the applicant developed down the street on Elm. Those, I believe a variance was granted there for the three stories. The answer is, it's a handsome looking project, there's no detriment that results from it. I think this is simply a way to, to keep the footprint here as small as practical. But not to compromise the livability of these units, again, we have a mixture of. Three bedroom and two bedroom units, that's, you know, a very nice design. And I think in a community like Madison that prides itself on as a, a, a family oriented community.
Thank you.
And I, the one final point is that I think the applicant also through the architecture has really. You know, dressed the building up, so again, I think that there's a lot of variety. It doesn't shout out to you as a, as a three story building as, as like a block kind of design would.
Does the board have questions? I'll bring up one, one. I think kind of minor thing, it's not a huge thing, but. When I was looking at the landscaping. I, I don't think it was done by a landscape architect, right, it was done on the engineering side and. I, I think for something like this, I'd, I'd like to see it like professional landscape. Architect do that and then run it past Mr. Stern because he's a licensed landscape architect. So I don't know, Mr. Stern, what do you think?
I think if the applicant agrees to that, I think that would be fantastic, especially now with the, the removal of the parking spaces. You really open up the front space now, I think it could be very well done, very well landscaped.
Joe and Russell, I think we had this issue on Angelica two. Kind of in the end, and we did retain a landscape architect for the second phase of that project. And I say we retain the same person and go down that road because the landscaping ended up. You know, it worked and it was very successful down the street, I have no objection.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, so is there any other points that the board? Has out there, because if not, we're going to go to the public. Are there any hands raised?
There are not.
Okay, so. That's that, so. Mr. Story, did you want to talk a little bit more, was anything else to present or?
Well, the applicant just wanted to summarize a couple key points for the board and then. Our presentation is done unless there is the need for any traffic testimony. At this point, I'd like to have Mr. D Simone, he's already been sworn in, you understand you're still under oath.
Yes, I did.
As you know, we went back to the drawing board, okay? Just give the board a little insight again to the architectural elements and more specifically Ms. Whitman's. Questions regarding the environmental memo and some of the concerns.
Just in regards to the architectural elements of the building, we're very aware that Elm Street is a mixed bag. Of different types of development over many different years, different heights of buildings. That's why, yeah, could you share that? One second, everybody, I just want to share this. Until this comes up, I just wanted to talk about the facade of the building. We use all James Hardy products. Cladding on the building is clapboard with a mixture of a cedar shake product. Up on those little towers, I call them. More mix of colors as we get down the street. They call them monetary cope.
Does anybody else see a drawing, I don't see anything.
No, we're having a problem, it's saying that I'm double signed in, Gary. I didn't want to accidentally X this out, it's showing me that we're signed in twice.
I don't know if anyone else has had trouble hearing Mr. Simone going, sort of going in and out where I'm receiving it.
Yeah, I think he was in and out a little bit, I could hear him, but it was in and out.
We just turned the volume up to the highest level, hopefully that helps.
Okay.
So just go, just going back, we've tried to take the front of the building, or really, you know, the Elm Street side and the front along my driveway. Where the garages are and mix the cladding with a cedar shake and a clapboard style. Cladding done in two alternating colors, one is called sandstone beige. And the cedar shake would be in monetary, called something called monetary cope, just to give it a little bit of a contrast. We also use. Something that's called a veneer brick around the front doors, it's a Boston red brick. And on the garage doors themselves, we do a mahogany colored door. And the reason for it is just to break up the color so it doesn't look like a monotone typical townhouse building. Also, we, up in our soffits. The, we use corbeled, corbels, 24 inches on center, crown molding in between. All of our windows are trimmed with an historical sill. I think everybody can see this now.
Yeah.
With a backband running around the windows, so it's a five quarter by four with a backband as well. As was done in the past on many historic buildings. And then just to speak to the Elm Street front, frontage on this side here. This proposed porch not only allows some outdoor space for this unit and a covered entry down here. The reason we put it here is just not to have the three story facade sort of slammed up against Elm Street. To try to mimic some of the older buildings that were on Elm Street and some that are still are, keeping this at two stories. I believe this roof is only about 21 or 22 feet high. We've also kept our roof pitches very low, these are basically a three on 12 roof pitch to try to keep it subdued. The last thing I'll speak about architecture is that this area right here that's marked roof shingles. And this isn't a great depiction, but it's just this white area is on these middle units, the roof shingles come down. Off the roof and actually come down almost in a mansard style. And what it does is just gives it the image. Of a two and a half story building, which would be allowed without a variance. And I understand I'm, I am still three stories, but we're just trying to give it the appearance, just to tone it down a little bit. We've also added these little, little roofs above the garage. That will conceal lighting underneath them to illuminate the garages at night. Switching gears to the Madison Environmental Commission's letter. I just wanted to comment on that because it is. It is new and involved, evolving topic that's coming into real estate development nowadays. In terms of the comments on the soared water demand. We propose all low flow toilets, all water saving appliances, high efficiency. Washing machines, dishwashers, et cetera. Drip irrigation will be used for our landscaping irrigation where we possibly can. It's difficult to use on lawn areas, obviously, but with our trees and our beds, we will use drip irrigation that will be on timers. They had a comment about the exterior lighting. So all the exterior lighting is LED on the building, high efficiency LED, and so is the inside of the building. We use all LED fixtures on the inside as well, which is above code and not necessarily required. They also had a comment on the efficiency of our air conditioning units. So a basic air conditioning unit, I won't bore everybody, is what, what's called a 13 sear. It's like your basic economy line, air conditioner. Uses a lot more energy than actually needed, we propose 16 sear condensers, which are extremely efficient. All of our furnaces will be 95% efficient, which exceeds the code by 15%. And in terms of some things that aren't quite here yet. We are going to be installing, we agree to install conduits to our parking areas for future, for future. Electrical vehicle charging stations. Inside the garages of every unit, I do this in all of my development, we install. Eight electric vehicle charger inside the garage and that's something that's done immediately. We also install electrical lines to our water heater and our furnace areas. For future use of retrofitting them to electric, electrical heat pumps. So in the future, the wires are there, the circuitry is there, et cetera. In terms of, they have one other comment here, and I think Russell touched, Russell and I touched on this. We will have a bicycle storage rack outside and indoor. Our garages, I believe, are 24, 25 feet deep. So in terms of putting bicycles and some extra storage in the garage, a, a normal typical garage sometimes is as small as 19 or 20 feet. Which ends up, the car never ends up in there because of bicycles, garbage cans, et cetera. So in these units, we've allowed for extra space at the back of the garage, exactly the same way we did it at Angelica one and Angelica two. And I can tell you that all those cars, all those garages are occupied at nighttime down there. And it's because the cars are allowed to pull in or, or have that extra room to pull in. Even in allowing rooms, storage for bikes and garbage cans. So what I'm getting at in terms of the environmental commission's letter is that we are, we are trying to. Reasonably meet as many requirements as they have requested, above and beyond any sort of building code.
Okay. That's all we could ask, this is recommendatory only. So, that's, sounds excellent. What, was there anything else you wanted to wind up with?
As far as Mr. D Simone, no, he's my last witness. So if there's nobody from the public with any questions for him, I just would do probably a brief two second summary. And then we're going to be pleading if the board and we really appreciate your extended time this evening, will be ready to vote on our application.
Is there any questions for Mr. D Simone or any questions looming out there from, from the board that needs to be answered at this point?
There is no one in attendance that has their hand raised.
Okay, so I was asking about the board, is any, anybody on the board at this point, so make sure everybody's satisfied or experts. Okay, and so there's, I was going to say, I was going to go to the public for any questions of the witness, but. Also make any statements either in support or opposition to the application, because now would be the time. So you're saying there's nobody?
There is no one.
Okay, so if you'd like to make a closing statement or two, that's fine, and then we're going to move into deliberation.
Again, board members, Mr. Chairman, we really appreciate everybody's time. Hopefully the board can see through the revisions made, the amount of time and effort, the applicant and the professionals. Working with your professionals as well has taken to really try to hone in. And come up with a much more viable solution to the site that exists today. As Mr. Stec says, this has been an unimproved site as the board members are aware of for quite some time. And we really do feel this is a very nice transition. And we really do feel this is a very nice transition from the adjacent zone to the nursing home with a very nice, very small, modest townhome development that Mr. D Simone has already demonstrated to the board through the past development of Angelica one and two. Just the high quality of work that he does and the attention to detail. And we feel this is a very hopefully strong application in that we've met the burden for the board this evening. And we hope again that all the board members will be in support of it and vote yes this evening. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And so with that, we'll go to the presentation portion. And we'll go to deliberation. So Christine, how about you? Would you like to speak?
Sure. I, I found that this met the burden. I'm appreciative that you listened to the prior board comments and came back with this plan. I'm disappointed that we lost one of the affordable units, but in some way I'd like that there's an affordable unit next to an identical market rate unit. And I, I think that's a good thing. It's a good optic. So I'm very much in favor of this. Thank you.
Roger?
Yeah, I agree. It's become a very good project here. I did think initially to start as quite an intense project. It really flows together with the other two that have been done already. It is a very transitional zone there. It butts up against the nursing home zone. There are a number of variants that's required, but they all seem fairly minor. And just architecturally really is very attractive. And the other two projects, to me, it's worked out so well. I think this worked out very well also.
Tim?
Yeah, look, I'm supportive for all the reasons that have been described. I think this is a a, a nice response to the comments from last time around. You've got a, I think, an excellent track record in terms of redeveloping a, a challenging group of lots there on Elm Street. So I'm supportive.
Mary Sue?
Joe, I can't vote on this because I wasn't at the February 11th meeting and the transcripts weren't available. So I decline. Thanks.
Okay, that's all fine. Helen?
I'm pretty much in agreement with what I've heard from the others. I appreciate what Christine said because although it may not be something that ordinances require, it, it does look a lot better if you have a market rate unit and you haven't created second-class citizens in affordable units. So I like that too. Okay.
Okay, Anthony?
Yeah, I'm supportive. You know, I echo all of the other input. So and I'm supportive of the application.
Jim?
Now I'm unmuted. Appreciate the changes that have been suggested. For me, frankly, though, the density does remain too high. You know, the initial application, you know, the density was, the units per acre were, you know, close to three times the, the, the allowed max. This one, it is about two and a half times the allowed max, which is still pretty heavy. The initial application, there were six market rate units supporting the affordable units. There were 84% of the square footage looked like it was market rate. This one, there are five market rate units, 90% of the square footage in the development looks like it's market rate. I think that, I think that the unit could be better if we took one more unit out. I think that would be consistent with, in fact, to be consistent with Mr. Stex's testimony in terms of what the town is looking for in terms of one affordable unit at a density of 10 per acre, which is exactly what we'd have if we took one more unit out. So appreciate the changes, but for me, it's just a little bit too dense. I couldn't, couldn't go for it with the revisions they've proposed.
So you would vote no? You would vote no?
Correct.
Okay. I think I'm the last one, right? So yeah, I'm in favor of the application. I think that Angelica one, two, and three have all been very favorable, positive for that area, right? There's certain areas of town or zones that we know from the master plan and our own travels around town that need help. And I've been saying for years that this area of a park and it needs help. Okay. And I think what Mr. D Simone has done over the years has been a very positive force here, and he builds a really quality product. And you know, I think his reputation is terrific on this. I got what I, what I wanted out of this, which was a reduction in density to something similar to what was the two, two previous projects were. And I think that that does work. And I think that Mr. Mr. Stex's testimony was good. And I agree with him and also Mr. Stern. And looking at this, I think that the additional density, while it's above what's called for in the ordinance, I think it, I think that the property will operate where they're able to deal with any issues on the property. It's not, it's not too dense that you can't deal with those issues. I think it will flow nicely. I think the traffic, the parking, so on and so forth is fine. I think it will work okay. And so with the revisions, I think gives you the elbow room to make it work well. So and also the low-income unit, I think, is a great thing. So I'm in favor of it. So Gary, we had how you want to phrase the new conditions we came up with tonight.
Well, I wanted to go through that. I guess first of all, I, Dennis, can you summarize? There are several that you mentioned, I think, from your report, and I didn't write them down too well.
Yeah, you had the sewage line.
Right, right. The inspection of the sanitary, existing sanitary sewer lateral to make sure it's intact and be reused. Modest tweaking or adjustments to the site plan with regard to the stormwater management arrangement at the, at the entrance to the site, as well as relocation of the mailbox.
There was also some bonding. Was there a bonding issue there?
The bonding will be in, in accordance with the recently adopted changes to the municipal land use law, where the bond covers just those improvements within the public right of way, as well as any required landscape buffers.
Okay, so we did have a professional landscape landscape from above. And then the fence, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, I had that, the revised landscape plan with a landscape architect. And eliminate the two front parking spaces, which are still shown on the plan. So we'll need a revised plan. And I think the
And they agreed to everything in Mrs. Stern's memo.
Right, yeah, Stern and Harrington memos. And the only other thing was to clarify the fencing proposals. I think maybe we did that.
Yes, we did.
But all that, you know, revised plan was showing the, those items, the fence, the parking change and I guess that's the main ones. And landscaping, that can all be on one plan.
Is that all agreeable to the applicant?
It is.
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's terrific. All right. So with that, could we get a motion to approve this application with those conditions?
So.
Ellen? Well, second. Who's second?
Tim.
Tim, okay, perfect. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Dianio?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Terra Telly?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
No.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, congratulations. Your application is approved. Wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's become my life work to clean up Elm Street. I'm going to keep going.
Well, you're welcome. You're welcome to come back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Appreciate it, everybody.
So we're not going to, we're not going to get to the annual report tonight. I just want to thank the members for sticking with it because, you know, I've been trying to not, not run past 11 o'clock, right? But we're in a tough spot right now with everything we've got. So I appreciate everybody pitching in, you know, going late to get this one out of the agenda. So thank you. That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Santoro, do you want the annual report on the March 25th meeting?
We could, we could try it then. Just put it on there. There, if we have room, we'll, we'll try and get to it. Okay, so is there anything anybody wants to bring up before we go get a snack or go to bed?
Cocktail.
We're back in two weeks. For 295, 297 Main Street, assuming they give us revised plans and the four residuals that were carried from tonight's meeting.
Okay.
And will tell us, we have new residuals already booked for the regular April meeting.
Right.
Thanks.
Okay, again, thank you, everybody, because I think we're doing a lot of things. I know it's a lot of hard work, but I think it's worth what we're doing. So thank you. I appreciate it. And also thank you to Russell and Dennis. You guys have been terrific. So thank you as well for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, Fran?
Yes.
Great job.
I don't know. I don't think I'm ever going to get this Zoom stuff straight.
All right, now you're getting a little better every time. Don't worry about it. Okay, can you motion for adjourned, please?
Don't move.
Second? Go in favor.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.